We are going to continue is to 8.5 adding item to consent agenda. I apologize, my proposal was to, it's the next one, so disregard it. My proposal was to removing items from consent agenda. So please do not read my proposal. 8.51 is to, oh, that's also delete.
You're done with 8.5.
Okay, so both of them actually is for removal to 8.52, the comment. So council member Moore says delete 8.52. Council member Thrun revised 8.52 to allow council members to remove at least one item from the consent calendar without providing notice before the council meeting begins. And my recommendation was to allow items to be removed by the public with council majority affirmative. And the member of the public needs to request removal item and state the reason for the request. I am willing to strike mine. I think it's a little bit too complicated. So let's just consider council member Moore and council member Thrun's recommendations.
As a point of order, I think we skipped 8.5.1.
Oh, because both of them are 8.52s.
If you read them against 8.5.1, you'll see that they do fit. There are references to removing there. This is specific to the ability of the public to remove.
Oh, I see.
An item from the consent calendar.
Okay, so I did do the right, okay, let's go back to 8.51. I thought both is for removal instead of the addition because 8.51 is adding item to the consent calendar.
Yeah.
Well, I'm saying removing.
So maybe that last sentence should be moved to the next item.
So that should be on 8.5.2.
That's what I thought.
Your comments.
Yeah.
I would suggest that as it is written, these do track at the moment. Is it as clean as it could be? I would agree it is not, but I think that we can continue with a usual straw poll on each of these because we need to be able to get to item two on the agenda.
All right, so I'm willing to strike mine, so don't look at mine. As council member Moore.
Yeah, I think that my comment doesn't belong really here. I just wanted to make sure, so this is all about adding items to the consent calendar, and that's a practice that we've seen on other boards.
Okay, so.
So I have no, I have no addition.
So a straw poll is to approve the, as written? May I have votes?
I agree.
Council member Chow.
I would like to structure the language. Any item may be placed on the consent agenda by a majority vote of the city council. I think before we even have a discussion on an item.
So you want to strike those sentences?
Yeah, I feel that's really going against transparency and communication with the public. Because I know that the city council has done that in the past. Every time, I feel very uncomfortable. Because the public might want to talk about an item believing it will be item nine, and then it's polled, moved toward and unconcerned, we already approved. Then they might not, they might come up to the meeting and find out, oh, they missed their chance to speak.
Okay, so you would like to strike the sentences from, let me look at it.
The, in addition.
Any item, in addition, any item may be placed on the consent calendar by a majority vote of the city council. Your proposal is to strike that.
Yeah, because if this item really is simple, we would approve that quickly.
Okay.
But that preserve the order of the agenda and allow the public member.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm not seeing your screen if you're sharing.
Oh, I'm not sharing? Oh, I'm so sorry. Oh, because after break, it didn't get shared again, okay, sorry.
And I also have, through the mayor, I have one more question.
Am I sharing now?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we're going to put a straw vote on this unless you have a question on this item.
I have a question on this item regarding public comment on consent agenda item. If we are moving them around.
We're not talking about public comments.
When do they make public comment on consent agenda?
It follows whatever the, we decided, this is about consent agenda adding, let's stick to the item.
Ask that in 8.6, okay.
Sorry, adding consent. So the straw vote is to.
Yes.
Question.
Yes.
We've had a member of the public with their hand raised. Is there any time during this discussion whatsoever?
City, city council, city manager, city attorney Jensen? We are not open up for public comments, are we?
There's no requirement to open up for public comments and council is deliberating, yes.
Okay, thank you. So can we? I'm sorry, I actually didn't hear it, but what, maybe we can communicate here later. So on 8.51, council member Chow proposed to delete from in addition to a majority vote of the council. The straw vote is to, I think council member Thrun voted to accept.
I voted to approve it as is.
Okay, and council member Chow has a amendment, and you're voting for your own, right? Council member Chow? Okay.
Yeah, my vote is to leave it as it is.
And council member Moore?
I would strike the last item. We're looking at 8.5.1, so I actually do want to have that deletion because I don't quite understand why it's sitting here. Because this is an item called adding item to consent calendar. And then it says in the last line, items may be removed from consent item, from the consent calendar only by a member of the city council. That doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay, so you want to remove that?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm okay with the current language.
I could change my, yeah, I support it with the council member Moore's change, suggested change.
Okay, so we have two on council member Moore's suggestion and two as is and one with striking the sentence. So you want to change your vote?
Mayor, I have a question to the city attorney. So we did not, we don't have any definition on what could be put on consent. I didn't research, and you reviewed the other city's council procedures. Do they define what kind of items can be put on consent?
Generally not, I'm sure that you could find examples where they did.
Can like a resolution, first reading, second reading be put on there?
So first readings, ordinances can generally not be put on consent. But, you know, most things can, I mean, there's most things, there's no legal reason why they can't go on consent. It's, it is a judgment made by the city manager and consultation with the mayor as to, you know, the need for discussion and deliberation about a particular item. It would be possible, I suppose, to try to define that. Generally, I would say that most rules don't. I'm sure that there's some examples we could, we could find if there was an interest in doing that.
But legally, what's required to not unconcern are ordinances, first reading, second reading, and how about development proposals?
May I bring it back to the topic?
I think we need to know what could be on the consent, right?
We're talking about adding, oh, okay, city manager, city attorney, you're proactive, yeah.
How about like appeal to, to somewhere, appeal to planning commission? Can this, we put it on consent to just reject the appeal?
Generally, no, generally not, no. So in addition to ordinances, public hearings can't go on consent. There are other, other items that are provided by statute that can't be on the consent calendar, such as compensation for your appointed employees.
Oh, if we can get a memo about that, that would be great. So we're more clear, it seems like it's complicated.
Sure.
Yeah, we could certainly do that.
Mayor, so typically consent calendars, as Chris mentioned, uses discretion, but typically these are minutes, financial reports, contracts, anything that's not controversial and that will help council to move along your project. There's certain project that requires a public hearing, entitlement project, appeals, ordinances, but the second reading, the final reading sometimes can't go on the consent.
How about like budget request?
That usually, budget allocation depending on what it is, if it's already being budgeted, you're just doing allocation that yes or no, this is where discretion comes in.
But if it's additional budget request?
I think, I think we're getting into a lot of details, but we'll provide you a memo.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, city manager. So we have two and two and one, so I would change to with council member Moore and council member, vice mayor Chow, so we can move forward. All right, so let's move to 8.52, removing it from consent calendar. Council member Moore's delete the whole 8.52. Council member Thrun allowed section 8.52 to allow council members to move at most one item from consent agenda without providing notice before the council meeting begins. Maybe we have some comments from council member Thrun?
Given, given the change now that has occurred to 8.5.1, I would add to it the text that was deleted from that section, items may be removed from the consent calendar only by a member of the city council.
Okay, and to add into it, right? Okay. So now we have, can we have a straw vote?
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Thank you, so I have some comments on this one. Okay, so the city of Cupertino has been very respectfully allowing members of the public to remove items from the consent calendar. I want to point out, for instance, our January 17th meeting had 21 items on consent and they were not simple rubber stamping type things. You had the Lawrence Midi Park and Trail Project Design Direction, you had Wilson Park Community Garden, a contract award for basketball court, rejecting all bids for the Blackberry Farm, on and on, lots of things here. And now also, as I had mentioned previously, where there was a request to shorten up some of the, decrease some of the duties of, and wholesale remove, there's certain committees loading up council even, even further with that. And so there's probably a danger that we're going to have even more items put onto consent. In fact, show me the money, financial transparency needed was put on consent. So the reason why I would say delete section 8.5.2 is because we, we have been relying on our members of the public who have been very carefully going through the agenda, they provide information, and, and I really appreciate it and I trust their judgment. They've been very respectful about the items which they remove. And I wouldn't want to take that, that right away. It's one of the things that makes our council meetings, you know, kind of overall warm and friendly places for members of the public to feel that they can participate. And in doing that, we're eliminating that ability and I really have a problem with it. So that's why I would say delete section 8.5.2, I don't think it's repairable as it is.
Thank you, council member Moore. Any more comment?
I had a comment. I thought 8.5.2 is about member of the city council who'd like to remove an item from the consent calendar, so why would that be a problem?
Yeah, the city council member can remove item from the consent agenda, absolutely, yeah. Go ahead.
So as, so as it, do I?
Yes, please.
As it's written right now, the public member does not have the right to remove agenda item. But our current practice has been the public can comment and say they want to pull an item, hear staff report on that item, and we have been able to, we have allowed that. And if the current way it's written, unless the council member requests it to be removed before the meeting, the council member hearing a public comment cannot request an item to be removed on the day.
Yes, and council member Thrun's suggestion actually should allow council members to move at least one more item from the consent agenda.
Yeah, so my comment is, actually, I usually would email the city manager before a meeting if I plan to pull an item so that the staff know, they'll be prepared to, with some representation. I think that's a good practice. But it's true that sometimes I don't know the information, the public may know, they might bring something to the council meeting. It would be great if they can email the council ahead of time, then I can pull that ahead of time. It may not work out all the time. So I'd like council member Thrun's compromise that allow each council member to grant that request to pull an item at the meeting, yeah.
Thank you. So I do believe council member Thrun added to the end of his proposal to say items may be removed from the consent agenda only by a member of the city council. Is that correct?
That's correct, it's there for clarity.
So we have two, we have two comments, one from council member Moore, the deleted, one for council member Thrun to this and add that sentence to it, and maybe we have a straw vote, please.
Pardon?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm also seeing council member Thrun saying to revise it to allow council members to remove at most one item? Is that part of that suggestion?
At the meeting, but before you can, you could, councils who like to remove any item from a consent agenda shall notify the city manager and city clerk prior to the meeting. But that doesn't say you can pull it at a time, so council member Thrun added if the council members want to remove, they can remove at least one more item from the consent agenda without providing notice for the council meeting begins. Because the comment is, we might hear a public comment from, or communication from, you know, a public and you might say, oh, I would like to have more information on that, so that is what it's been there.
Yeah, so I can't agree with that because, because you've, you put 21 items and this was your choice.
Your straw vote is?
You put 21 items on consent and I have a feeling we're going to see a whole lot more. And what you're doing with this rule is making it so that if a member of the public tells us that there's a problem, I can only pull one item off. And the member of the public who made those comments during oral communications, you're taking away their ability to pull something from consent. So what you're making sure happens is that we don't have discussion and, and public accountability and, you know, let's, let's hash these things out like we did on the 17th. You're taking away their rights and our rights, and I disagree with that.
Okay.
So I'll interject on that one point if I might. We are all charged with reviewing these documents in advance. We have not surrendered any right to pull an item from consent in advance. That's all this asked. This prevents us from ambushing staff and leaving them unprepared so that we have a bad discussion that winds up going until who knows when. That is, that does not make for a good meeting. This is a compromise so that if we do have something that has genuinely been missed and it's been, we've been alerted to it by a member of the public at the last second, we still have a mechanism for addressing it. I don't think that there is some, some desire here to ram things through, which is what seems to be suggested at the moment. We should all be doing our homework in advance, and if we want to pull something from the consent calendar, then ask for it before the meeting.
And can I ask city manager a question? This doesn't preclude the public to ask questions ahead of time, too?
That is correct.
Okay, so thank you. Or email their council members, they have issues, questions, and they want the council members to pull it. So it's still a very open-ended for the public to participate? And I want to say there are cities who does have this policy. I do believe today at the West Valley Cities Manager and Mayor's meeting, the city of, if I do correctly, Los Gatos.
That is.
Have the policy that they do not allow the public to pull consent calendar. But that doesn't preclude the public making comments to consent calendars, email staff with questions, and ask their council members, any one of us or five of us, questions so that we are alerted to their concerns and issues. So I would hope that the public knows that this is not to not having them participate. And we really appreciate everybody's here. So that would be my comment. Yes, go ahead, council member Moore, but let's.
I do support the language as written plus council member Thrun's addition. I think the public then just need to email council members ahead of time so that we can make that request on your behalf. And maybe when you are not sure if you really want to comment, email anyway so that, I think the staff needs that notice that this item will be pulled, they will need to be in person and talk about the item. So it's, we just need to be giving them a bit more advanced notice, I think it's a good practice, yeah.
Okay, so can we have a straw poll, please?
Pardon me.
Yes.
Thank you. So this says, "Any member of the city council who would like to remove an item," that's singular, "one item" from the consent calendar, "shall notify the city manager and the city clerk prior to the meeting." So that's one. So when we were at the meeting on the 17th, there was a discussion about the committee assignments for the Historical Society Advisory Council. Now, that recommended action was not what we approved. We approved a different action. So there's, there's one item. The next one was show me the money, financial transparency needed.
May I interject? So that doesn't preclude any council member from pulling it ahead of time, after reading it?
An item.
Yeah.
One. And then when you're in the meeting, you get one item. We should be allowed to pull as many items as we need to because we might not agree with the recommended action. And that's not about, did you ask your question? No, it's whether or not you agree with the recommended action and you might not.
So.
Council member Thrun?
City attorney Jensen, if you could opine on the proper construction here with regard to the word "an," I read it as being much more open-ended rather than the closed version that council member Moore is suggesting.
Could you clarify your question, council member?
Sure, so the concern that council member Moore is raising is that by virtue of describing the ability to remove an item, an item from the consent calendar, which is in the first sentence, that only allows the removal of one item.
So the way that I would interpret this, the proposed language is that each council member is allowed to remove an unlimited number of items prior to the meeting. At the meeting, each council member would be allowed to remove one additional item for a total of up to five, if all council members exercised their right to do so.
So if we change "an" to "any," "any member of the city council member who would like to remove any item from the consent agenda shall notify the city manager and the city clerk prior to the meeting." Maybe that clarified the language? So it wasn't just one, it's anything you want to remove before.
So in the future, before each meeting, all I need to do is write the city clerk and say I'm removing all of the consent items.
And city manager.
And I'm going to remove all of the consent items, and then we'll have a discussion about putting them back.
If that is a practice that, okay, I'm not going to comment on that. Okay, sorry. Okay, so let's move on to straw vote?
I'm happy with the language I've suggested.
Council member Chow?
Yes, support the mayor's suggestion changing "an" to "any" and council member Thrun's assertion.
I agree with council member Chow put that, the "any," to change "an" to "any" and then concur with council member Thrun's recommendation. Council member Vice Mayor Mohan?
I'll go along with that, see.
Okay, council member Moore?
I agree with my request to delete the section.
So we have four, let's move on. Okay, let me, let me have this wrote down. We have public comment. So I make a very long suggestion because public comments, a lot of residents say, how about two speakers, three speakers, but then I realize this is way too long. And so I do agree with, we're going to limit public comment to 10 minutes if they have five or more, and the rest, just the mayor's discretion. Because sometimes we might change three minutes to two minutes, and then the two speakers might have shortened it. I understand I overwrote on this one. So I am going to scrap the thing I underlined and just say if the speaker represents five or more, as recommended. And then the length of the joint speakers will be at a discretion of the mayor as needed. And I did want public comments, this is not opening, this is not open oral communications on non-agenda items. I'm hoping this sentence is referring to our city council. All public comments must be relevant to the issues before the city council, we have that. Arguments for against measures should be related, stated as concisely as possible. I'm hoping our public will follow the same guidelines that the council members are being subject to, that's why I added this. I did not change any language, copy this from the requirement for council members. So I would like, you know, I'm okay with not having it, I just hope that the public would, you know, act as their council members, how their council member act. So I'm scrapping a lot of this. Yes, go ahead. And I think, sorry, I'm going to roll down. Council member Moore, I think you're next because you have a.
So really, all I wanted to make sure was that a member of the public is indeed allowed to speak on any agendized item. And, and I don't want them to feel as though they're limited to 10 minutes.
Yes, I did, sorry, I did strike. No member of the public may be allowed more than a combined of 10 minutes to speak during council meeting. I propose to delete that. And council member Thrun, I think you have the.
Yes, I proposed the same deletion and that we change the amount of time that members of the public have to raise their hand or submit a blue card to nine minutes. That would be roughly the equivalent of the first three speakers.
So may I suggest, or before the, when the public comment is closed, we don't want to open another five, 10 minutes for people to wave their hands. How can we incorporate that into it?
I think that the city attorney can draft language that would allow us to close public comment if there are no members of the public convincing a desire to speak.
And I don't want a council member say, oh, I'm eight minutes, if you close, I want to be able to speak. Can, see?
Yes, that, if the council provides that direction, that can be done.
All right, good. Okay, comments?
So I have a question.
Yes. Go ahead.
So in the original language, are we just, is the proposal to just eliminate that sentence which says, no member of the public may be allocated more than a combined of 10?
That's my, yes.
That's one sentence, that's deleted. Everything else stays the same?
I would like to add, all public comments must be relevant to the issues before the city council, but it's discretion, I'm not insisting on it. And then council member Thrun would like to ask to be nine minutes or, and instruct the city attorney to make sure if we close the comment, they cannot come back to say, I'm within nine minutes, I want to speak.
So, yeah, so a question. Are we allowed to limit the subject matter to within the city's jurisdiction? Because we had like middle schoolers come and talk about their project and people commenting on other things that may not be in city jurisdiction, before we even, they start speaking, we don't know, so.
So that's, that's the Brown Act requirement, is that, you know, have to allow public comment on any item within the council's subject matter jurisdiction. You know, how, I think, you know, we enforce that rule against speakers is, I think, a matter of discretion and should be exercised delicately because you don't want to necessarily silence people who. who are, you know, feel like they have something important to say. But that is, that is the Brown Act requirement.
Okay. So Brown Act does say that. Okay, that's good to know. And another question is, so we now have a thirty minutes for the non-agenda item, right? And then for, if we allow, say, ten minutes for people to raise their hands, the first three speakers probably will have three minutes full, and then we find out, oh, fifty people raised their hands. Then it would be unfair to reduce the time for the remaining speakers. How do we?
Yes, so you could, I think it would be reasonable to have a shorter period for people to express their interest to speak when there's an item that, there's, you know, considerable interest. The mayor can also just request that people, you know, raise their hand immediately to get a sense of who's there. But yeah, I agree that it, although it's not necessarily a violation of the Brown Act, it does create, you know, problems if you're giving different people different amounts of time to speak.
And also, we have been allowing people attending virtually to speak first and then in person later. I think we swapped that today. But in case there is a lot of interest, there will be an issue on allowing only one set to speak first. So, and so what I had proposed is to adopt what Cupertino Union has been using is to have a virtual sign-up speaker card so that virtually, just like in person, people can hand in their blue card as soon as the meeting room opens. I think for them, it's thirty minutes before a meeting, you are allowed to submit your virtual card. And then the city clerk calls people based on the card. And so people attending in person can also submit that card. That way, there is one order between virtual and in-person speakers. And also, we know earlier how many speakers might be interested in speaking on an item. And yes, maybe we still close the time to submit your speaker card, like, five minutes after the staff presentation, for example.
So I think if there were an interest in council in pursuing virtual speaker cards, that's something that staff could pursue. I think that would require, you know, support from IT. It's not necessarily something that we could, you know, implement, you know, right away. But it's something that if there was an interest from council, we could pursue that system.
I think a simple Google form would work. It has timestamp for each entry. So this might require another agenda item to talk about, a better procedure that's fair to everyone and still, yeah. So, so right now, as it's written, I'm concerned of the current practice. With thirty minutes, how are we going to be fair?
So may I ask the city manager to reply to Councilmember Chow's request? If we go to virtual, how much tech support and how much time the staff need to work on this?
Mayor Wei, I don't know.
Oh, okay, so that could be noted.
But we'll definitely looking into it. I would not want to make a commitment not knowing and without talking to my department head. So, but your consideration, your suggestion is well noted.
Understood. Okay, so let's, so let's move forward with, we have comments on this. So let me see if I can repeat it. So the comment from me is to strike out the, "No member of the public may be allocated more than a combined minute of ten." And that's it. I'm not going to add anything else. And same thing with Councilmember Moore. I think we striking the same thing. Councilmember Fruin wants, same thing. And plus, the public comment raised your hand to submit card within nine minutes with city attorney's language to make sure that if the public comment is closed, they cannot raise their hands after public comment is closed. Do we have a straw vote on this?
Yes, I'll support-
Yes, Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Fruin supports?
I'll support the, the comment that I made.
Okay, Councilmember Moore?
Okay, so I just want to check in perhaps with the clerk about the nine minutes because we have the clock set for three. Now you've got, somebody's going to have to keep a nine-minute clock. That's all I'm saying. Because you'll have people that are speaking at different lengths of time.
I think currently, my city clerk was keeping the five minutes, right?
Yes, and the video can set whatever timer we'd like. We appreciate prior notice. We can have it arranged. But we can always, video's very quick on the fly. They have a number of clocks that are prepared.
So are you okay with the nine minutes? Okay, I use straw vote. Okay, yes. Councilmember Chow?
I, yeah, I support striking that ten-minute limit. But I have another question regarding public comments on consent agenda item. I think it has never been very clear to me on when the public can speak on, they want to pull item. And then when they, if an item is not pulled, when they can make a comment on that item that's not pulled? And then when they can speak on the item that's pulled? Maybe we can clarify it somewhere in this handbook?
So under the proposed rules, and this is a procedure that's used in most jurisdictions, although not all, that, you know, there's an, there has to be an opportunity for public comment on the consent item before council votes on it. So, votes on it. So typically, the mayor would introduce the consent calendar and then would, there would be an opportunity for the public to make comment on the consent item as a whole before council votes on it.
They can make comment on any one of the items, or one or more?
One or more items, that's correct.
But when do they make comment on pulling an item?
So under the proposed rules, the public would have to request that a council member pull an item?
Yes, so my question is, in our current order, when do they make that comment?
Every, if I understand correctly, every pulled item will have public comment?
No, 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 before it's pulled. They are coming and say, "Councilmember Fruin, I would like to pull item five." When do they make that comment?
I believe the question is, if a member of the public is asking a member of his council to pull an item for them, I would suggest that to be done prior to the meeting.
That's different from what we just approved.
What was just approved, I believe, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, only the council members are allowed to pull item.
Right. So, 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 so I think what the, what City Manager Wu said is correct. You know, it's probably best if it's done prior to the meeting. If there was one item that a member of the public wanted to be pulled, they should request that from, the council member do that before the consent calendar is heard.
Okay.
Then they must make a comment during the oral communication, but then they cannot comment on an item that's on the agenda during the oral communication. So there is no time.
There, so there is the opportunity before the meeting. I think that is the best opportunity.
They should talk to council members in person to pull that?
Or email. I mean, you get, you know, certainly, certainly the members of the public know how to reach council to comment on agenda items. And so that would be the same process that they ordinarily use.
Okay, so let's go back to the straw vote. Current straw vote is to accept Councilmember Fruin's recommendation plus with City Attorney Jensen to clarify the closed, no comments after the public comment is closed. And Councilmember Chow, you have not straw voted yet?
So I support striking the limit of ten minutes.
And add the nine minutes?
I think nine minutes. I'm concerned that-
You want to make another proposal, or you want to say yes, or you can make another proposal?
Maybe the mayor can clarify. If after nine minutes, a lot of people are speaking up, how are we going to reduce the time? Or are we going to have three minutes for the first three and one minute for the rest? How, I'm concerned as we lengthen the time, it would be not fair.
So would you like to propose a different limit? Five? Current is five. You want to do six, five, three?
I think five is sufficient, but I like the virtual speaker card.
So would, do you have a recommendation?
I would like to support five, but then have the agenda item on a better method of handling both virtual and in-person speaker cards.
Okay, so five with a further, this, further refinement of the process?
Yeah.
Okay, so a straw vote is, I think we, the two of you voted already. I'm okay with Councilmember Fruin's vote, too. So that's a four, zero to move, four, when to move forward? Councilmember Moore, you have an issue?
I just, when this does come to council, I'm wondering how we're going to educate the public for these changes and so that they know, have a table before and after of everything for, so that they understand what all has been proposed. Because we've changed the meeting order, their comment times.
That's a great suggestion.
Everything. I mean, these are, it's a huge amount of changes.
Okay, so let's move forward to number eight point nine. There's a staff recommendation to add explanation of quasi-ex parte and what is, yes. Are we, do we have, oh, what is quasi-judicial matters? And I, I like the staff recommendation so that we can understand what is ex parte, what is quasi-judicial matter. So can we have, since there's no comments from the council members, may we have a straw vote, please?
I'll agree with the staff recommendation.
Okay, and Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Yes, for me, too. Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Okay, let's move forward. And now we're going to eight point nine three. Council questions and deliberations. We do have comments that the mayor, because I was going to ask to add, a member who has been recognized should limit their time for five minutes to conform with the other statement. The mayor may add additional time for deliberation where appropriate. Because the previous recommendation doesn't say that. So I like to have the option for, provide more time for deliberation when appropriate.
Mayor Wei?
And Councilmember Fruin has a recommendation. Councilmember may attend the floor by seeking recognition. Can we just, yeah?
Yeah, sure. So I'll explain what's going on here. The substantive part that is really changing is the very end. It is designed to make it consistent with the beginning. The idea is that you, as a council member, each one of us would have five minutes on question time. And that the mayor would have the ability through discretion to allow additional questions. At the end, this is the language that I've changed. I've made it match that. So you have five minutes each to offer for deliberation, and then it is at the discretion of the mayor if there is to be more time to deliberate. I have also asked to, in order to make this consistent with our rules of parliamentary procedure, that this would displace any contrary rule in Rosenberg's. So that is what I'm asking for. That does mean that we would have to make an adjustment to eight point three, and I trust that the city attorney could make a consistent adjustment.
So may I understand it, so you simply add the last sentence to it? With my, with the, with the, what I suggested, I think you and I kind of suggest the same thing. The mayor may allow additional time for, I want to say, questions, deliberation?
Yes, you would strike the word "questions" in mine and add deliberations.
Right, because this is deliberation time already, that question.
Correct, that's a-
But you want to add, "This rule shall display any conflicting rules in the city's adopted rules of procedure."
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor Wei?
Yes, Councilmember Moore?
I really appreciate your revision, and I support your revision to this item.
Okay, without the last sentence added by Councilmember Fruin?
Oh, yeah, correct. Absolutely not. We adopted Rosenberg's rules, and it was abbreviated from Roberts' rules. And they're much more easy to digest, and the other commissions and committees follow them as well. Thank you.
So I would suggest, no, I would support Councilmember Fruin's because that makes it clear what rules we're following. I'm okay with adding that last sentence. That's my straw vote. So let's go to-
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Chow, you have a question? Yes, please.
I didn't understand the rule will dispute any conflicting rule. So this conflicting rule refers to Rosenberg's rule? And so exactly which part isn't conflicting? I thought Rosenberg's rule is the rule we are following. Is there, where are we conflicting with that? I would like to know before. Because maybe then we should comply with, establish the Rosenberg rule rather than adopting something that's conflicting. So do we know of any conflicting ones?
So, yeah, so just, just sort of the threshold question. So council adopted Rosenberg's rules. They could make modifications to the rules. It's, that's, it's not unusual for jurisdictions to do that kind of adopt modification to the rules. Here, the particular rule that would be overridden by the proposed policy would be the motion to limit debate, which, you know, was generally, requires a supermajority vote of the council to call the question. This would give the mayor the ability to limit debate.
Oh, in that case, then I don't support that. I think the Rosenberg's rule makes sense that the motion to limit debate.
Okay, so you would support my, or just as written, or?
I, where does it say the mayor gets to limit debate?
Because on-
Oh, the mayor may request that a motion be, wait, no, that's the second.
No, additional, the mayor may allow additional time for deliberation where appropriate. It wasn't added.
That has been the case, so.
No, but it wasn't in the, it wasn't written. So I like to specify.
Oh, yeah, so mayor would allow additional time. Yeah, so where does it say the mayor can limit debate?
It doesn't say that, but it gives the mayor discretion to allow or not allow additional time. And because it's proposed, I mean, it does clearly state that it would displace conflicting rules. I, that's how I interpret that language. It's Councilmember Fruin's language, so he should feel free to speak up if I'm incorrect.
Is there any other conflicting rule?
Nope, that is the only conflict.
Okay, so your straw vote, Councilmember Chow?
I like Councilmember Wei's version, just add that sentence rather than trying to displace Rosenberg's rule without knowing exactly what it is.
Okay, I would vote for Councilmember Fruin's because that incorporates my, to make it clear what rules we're following. And Vice Mayor Mohan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with Councilmember Fruin's recommended change. The only thing was this last, the last sentence was, "This rule shall displace any conflicting rule in the city's adopted rules of procedure." I thought that was probably not necessary to say because everything we say in this document displaces any other rules that have been, that are previously adopted.
Pardon me, Mayor Wei.
If the city attorney could comment on whether or not that displacement actually exists without this line?
Yeah, Councilmember Moore, I thought you voted for my already.
But there's been a discussion since then, and information provided from the city attorney. So I want to make it clear that when, when you are voting for Councilmember Fruin, you are voting to limit debate by the council. And that is, that is debate and discussion which the council enjoys. It is for us to talk about these items, for us to deliberate on these items. And this was, in my opinion, rather- And this was, in my opinion, rather cleverly and indirectly written, so that we needed to go to the attorney to have it explained for what this actually does in effect. We have never had that. We have never limited the discussion like that. This is a debate. When you get to the four to one, when you call the question, we, we have not failed to call the question and end the discussion. We have been able to do that. We don't need to limit debate. So I hope that everyone here understands that this vote is to limit the council's ability to discuss an item, to shut it down with the authority being given solely to the mayor to do that.
I don't think I get the, I don't think the mayor gets, the mayor only allows additional time for questions.
Where appropriate, it's all your choice, no longer a four to one, no vote, Rosenberg's is gone on this item.
That is correct, there should not be a filibuster that would be available to this body.
Yeah, I agree with vice mayor Mohan that the last sentence um, in council member Frum's paragraph is confusing and not really necessary. It refers to this rule, any conflicting rule. It's very hard to, for the public to understand what rule we are talking about, and it doesn't seem necessary. I think, um, current practice, yeah, I, I like your proposal. The current practice has been, the, the mayor does limit time and say we should move on, and we do. And it's, the, the mayor does have already that authority to say enough discussion. I think I'm okay with that, and other council members can call a question, and then we can say, okay, let's move on. So I think I, that's already good enough. That's not adopting something that no one understands, so.
We have council member Frum, you wanna say some more things, or we, before we go on to?
Like I said, we are, we would be ratifying a filibuster from this body if this rule is not adopted.
Okay, so To the mayor, to the mayor, we, we have been working under Rosenberg's rules all this time. We're not changing it. This would change it.
Okay.
And have we had, have we had a problem with, with a filibuster? Never. No, we all want to get to the finish line, get something either approved, changed, but it's, it's not been a problem. This is being invented, it's, it's not an issue here.
Okay, so um, uh council member Moore votes for my revision, and council member Chow votes for my revision. Council member Frum voted for his um revision, and I voted along with council member Frum and vice mayor Mohan. Please um, uh, please, please um straw vote, thank you. And then I can move. I'm sorry, did, did I ask, I did ask you, I need your straw vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Yes, yes.
On, on which one?
On, on council member Frum's uh, uh, language.
Okay, so um, let's move on. And we do have one more, or maybe more than one more, eight point ten, meeting length. We have council member Frum's uh comment, we have council member Moore's comment, and we have vice mayor Mohan's comment. Council member Frum, could you say your comments first?
Sure, this is relatively simple, I'm just trying to allow us to be able to extend the time of a meeting if we feel like it's necessary um by a simple majority vote of the council, rather than requiring a two-thirds vote. A two-thirds vote at present would require four members of the council to uh agree.
May I ask a question, is it, our current practice is this, right?
Well, we don't have any, we do not have any adopted rules.
Oh, okay.
Our, our current prac- practice has been to discontinue meetings at midnight. Um, council uh has at times voted to extend them past midnight based on a majority vote.
Right, because I remember uh Mayor Paul would ask us if, can we extend it for another fifteen minutes? Can we extend it for another thirty minutes, and we do a majority vote. It looks like this is what it's, it's said. For a majority instead of two-thirds, because two-thirds will require four. Is that what uh council member Frum's intention?
My, my intention is just to make it a little easier for the, the council to decide that it wants to stay longer, rather than requiring of, at least four out of the five members to continue the meeting until later time that night.
Right, so for a majority vote?
Yes.
Okay, good, understand. Council member Moore, you have a very long written statement. Can you explain it?
It was just simply to um maintain the twelve, uh, twelve PM, or I should say twelve AM ending time, so I was just trying to edit it so that it could reflect that. But if you think that these meetings are going to end at that hour, uh, you're welcome to keep that.
Okay, council member, uh, vice mayor Mohan?
Yeah, my comment was only in the unusual event that it has to go beyond uh eleven thirty, then the mayor would have the discretion to extend the, the, the time of adjournment.
Okay.
And I, I think the assumption is, provided the council agrees.
Okay, so council member Frum's is to favor majority, and council member Moore, are you willing to withdraw it? Or you going to let us move over on that one?
I'll, I'll withdraw my revision.
Withdraw, and then uh, con- uh, vice mayor Mohan's is to let the mayor have authority. So let's, I have the straw vote. Council member, anybody wanna vote first?
I'll vote for mine.
I support that.
Me too.
Yeah, I vote for uh council member Frum's as well.
Council member Moore, you okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Oh, the only problem I had was the two-third vote.
No, we're getting rid of the two-thirds, going to majority.
Okay.
So um, uh, uh, con- number eight point eleven, I think we have one comment from council member Moore to indicate that time limits are recommended rather than strict requirements. And I'm absolutely okay with that.
Okay, it did make common sense, we can't have, for instance, a staff report on the housing element, it's less than ten minutes.
Any comments?
I'm fine with that too.
Okay, let's get a straw vote. Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes, and council member Chow?
Wait, what's council member Moore's revision?
Yes. You're good?
No, I mean, what's council member Moore's?
It's to recommend, it's a recommendation, not a strict requirement for the time limits.
Oh, okay. Preferably.
Yes.
I think that's better, so it's more clear.
Thank you. Okay, so now, let's move to eight point twelve. Uh, the comments is staff recommend to clarify that a special meeting may be called during the recess period. Council member Chow, you have a different recommendation?
Oh, um, so this is a study session, I think I
No, this is to, oh, okay. City council recess period.
Right, so, so I, I would suggest that we, 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 um, uh, council address section eight point twelve, and then a council, council member Chow is suggesting adding a new uh paragraph.
Council member Chow, you wanna explain a little bit of your um?
Oh, so this is my paragraph, so as we have heard from many members of the public, the, the, um
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Point of order, so I think what the city attorney was suggesting was that we address eight point twelve first.
I, I, I just received it. So let's go to eight point twelve first. So you recommend at eight point thirteen, okay, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the staff recommendation.
Me too.
Council member Moore?
Uh, okay, so um, eight point twelve, I, I had some comments which were not reflected here. Um, and with regards to this um recess period. Okay, so I'm counting this out as being seven weeks off, and um, I wanna understand that. So during the recess period, the city manager is authorized to take such ministerial actions for matters of operational urgency, including such emergency actions as are necessary for the, okay, immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety, as would normally be taken by the city council during the period of recess. Okay, um, so what it sounds like, okay, the, the city manager shall make a full and complete report to the city council at its first regularly scheduled meeting following the period of recess of actions taken by the city manager pursuant to this section, at which time the city council may make such findings as may be required to ratify the actions of the city manager. Essentially, it seems as though we're taking off on a seven-week vacation, leaving the city manager in charge. And then on top of that, a special meeting could be um called during that period. However, if we're trying to now navigate, uh, we've got a seven-week vacation break, and we're planning our time off, and now you've got a special meeting that's thrown at you, um, I think that makes it very difficult. I think the period of recess is, is far too long. And I, I would like it shortened up. So this, this past summer, I think we had a, like, two council meetings that were off. Maybe, maybe, maybe only one.
Maybe, I, I'll clarify. So this is, so the recess period would be approximately a month um, from the, uh, to, the first Tuesday in August, and then it would end uh the Tuesday following Labor Day. So that would, that would, that the, the, the expectation would be that there would be two, two council meetings in August that don't take place. Um, that council would return for that first meeting in September. I, I, I think the expectation would be that hopefully we wouldn't need a special meeting during that period, but that, I thought that clarification was important in case, for example, there was an urgent litigation matter that required a closed session. Um, and, you know, so, so certainly, you know, you'd under, you'd, you'd wanna try to, to, to get um everybody there. But um, uh, you know, i- i- you know, i- unless council were comfortable delegating much more significant settlement authority, for example, during the, to the city attorney during that period, um, I, I would wanna have the ability to go to council, to, you know, you know, if there was a need for um decision regarding the resolution of litigation or the initiation of litigation, um, or there could be other emergencies that would warrant a special meeting, for example, if we had some kind of natural disaster. Um, so, um, so that, that, that's the thought, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be something that would be expected.
So a question, still council can always change that we won't have a meeting in August if um the council so desires, right?
That's correct. I mean, what this, so, I mean, typically what the council has done is, is, has, has, has canceled meetings kind of on an ad hoc basis over the course of, of the year. Uh, this is an attempt to, to regularize it. It's obviously up to council if it wants the period to be shorter or longer at a different time of year. Uh, this was a, this is a common period where, where many councils are dark. But, so that, this was just an attempt to have a, a, a regularized process that, that doesn't require the, you know, the, the sort of ad hoc consideration of this issue every year.
Okay, but anytime the council wants to change this, we can put on agenda and change it.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I had a question.
Yes, council member, uh, vice mayor Mohan?
I always thought that uh the recess was in August.
This is, yeah, August.
Right, so how, why is this a change?
Uh, so there, there is no formal recess policy that council has adopted.
Uh, council member Moore?
Um, so the fourth of July falls on a Tuesday, does that mean we're having the city council meeting on July fifth?
That is correct.
Or is that, okay, so it's not canceled?
It's actually part of the municipal code.
Okay, right, I thought I had read that. Um, and also, when it says that the um, the recess period shall begin the first Tuesday in August, does that mean there'll be a meeting on that Tuesday or not?
So the, the intent of the meeting is that the both of the meeting, the bo- excuse me, the intent of, of the uh, the language is that both meetings in August would be canceled, but council would resume on the first Tuesday in September.
Okay, so if I understand that correctly, um, we would have a meeting on July fifth, and then the next one would be on the eighteenth, and then there would be um, one, two, three, four, five, six, yeah, like I said, seven, seven weeks uh before the next meeting. So that, to me, that's too long.
To the mayor, if I may.
Yes, please.
Last Tuesday, if you remember, Clark's office actually established the twenty twenty-three calendar, which was approved by council. Um, so we could bring that up again to refresh your memory. That was the um regularly scheduled calendar events for this year. But as Chris mentioned, that you have all discretion to call a special meeting um for any other budget reason or any other project that you wish to discuss.
Okay, thank you. I, I think we, we should do a straw vote on this one, this should be pretty
Question.
Go ahead, please make it short.
I thought the, in the past, the recess is usually in July, because that's when the families are going on vacation. And so it usually, it's the two meetings in July that were canceled.
If, if council wishes to, to, to have the recess in July, I don't have any particular preference.
Any reason why it's moved to August, it's to align with the Labor Day?
I, 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 I think, no, there's, there, there's no reason other than that's, that's probably a more common practice is for, for councils to go dark in August. I mean, there are councils that take a much longer break in the summer, I'm not suggesting that. Um, but um, if, if, if there would be, if there's a preference to um, to, to have the, the recess in July, you know, this would, you know, this is certainly something council could uh adopt a different schedule.
Yeah, I think July makes more sense, because that coincides with school schedule. If people, council members who have kids, they might need
If I can make a suggestion, July is usually the busiest season because we just adopted the budget. So, um, so July first is the new date for the next fiscal year budget, usually there's a lot going on. There might be follow-up that we need council to consider.
As long as I have attended a council meeting, usually it's a July meeting that, the two July meetings were canceled usually.
We, we can, we have adopted our calendar last time, so if uh council member Chow would like to make a revision, we can always do that um on the next um agenda item, so let's move on this one, please.
Another question right now, the first, the sentence reads, begin the first Tuesday in August and the Tuesday following Labor Day. So, but you were saying that Tuesday fa- following Labor Day will be the first council meeting after the recess?
Yes, that's correct.
The way it reads, it sounds like that Tuesday is included in the recess.
Um, I could, why don't I pu- put a time for the starting and ending, just to eliminate any ambiguity? If, if council, if, if council would
So, yeah, maybe the, the first Tuesday after the Labor Day is, is a start, we, yeah, to clarify that.
Okay, may, uh, maybe uh recommend that um, city attorney Jensen to clarify it a, a bit more, but I, I, I understand the uh, the dates. So let's take a straw vote.
I support the recommendation.
Sorry, another question. Right now, the last sentence says that's, nothing prevents the city council from calling a special meeting. Uh, do you mean the mayor and, or the city manager?
Um, so it'd be the, the mayor or three members of the city council, that, that's the procedure for calling a special meeting?
Um.
That, that's the staff recommendation.
I mean, in case there are any emergency, I guess, okay, city manager can ask the mayor to call a special meeting.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you, and your vote, please?
Um, yes.
Council member Moore?
With reservations, yes.
Yes. Yes. All right, let's move on, thank you very much. And closed session, enforcement of rules, suspension.
Uh, I think next one is my comment, that on study session, that does not belong to an item right now.
Oh, I am so sorry, yes, add, add the number eight point thirteen to ref- to read as follows. Go ahead.
No, not eight point thirteen, it's
You're gonna add, because we ended with eight point twelve, so you're, you're adding eight point thirteen.
Okay, yeah, study session are meetings during which the council uh receives information about city business in an informal setting. The informal study session setting is intended to encourage in-depth discussion and detailed questioning and brainstorming by council on issues of significant interest including city policy matters, zoning applications, and major public works projects. The council may discuss material freely without following formal rule of parliamentary procedure. Staff may be uh directed to bring matters back for future council consideration as no action can be taken at a as no action can be taken at a study session. The decorum rule still apply to the behavior of the city council. Of course, I did not come up with this language. I copied it from, I think, Palau Auto. But Berkeley also says, defines what study session is, and, um, that no action would be taken. So I'm not married to things like not following parliamentary procedure. I think it's okay to follow that. Or, but I would like to clearly, more clearly define that we should not take action on study session. So, because that has been the practice of, of Cupertino, and so that the public knows if the council can give direction, and if anything formal action will be taken will be in a next regular session.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from, uh, staff, uh, council members?
Yeah, I, I, I like the general thrust of the idea, but I think it's something that would be better discussed at a future agenda item. We might be able to consolidate a number of them into a, a revision of this set of, of rules.
Any other comments?
Uh, my comment was, I thought we, uh, uh, had a brief discussion about this at the start of this, today's meeting, where, uh, study session, uh, as, uh, as told to us by the city attorney was, was no different from, uh, a, any other.
Um, so, um, so I just want to ask the attorney, is another to confirm that there is, it's not whether it's legal or not, it's probably what this, this council wants to do, right?
Right, ju- just to clarify the earlier discussion, there is no state law or city ordinance or, or, or policy in place that makes any distinction between study sessions and other, um, types of agenda items on which council may act. Um, that said, there's nothing preventing council from adopting this type of policy if it wishes to do so.
Okay, thank you. So, um, so eight point thirteen, that's, uh, Councilmember Chow proposed to add. Um, can we have a straw, oh, discussions. Do we have one more discussion? Councilmember Moore?
I, I think I would just simplify it, um, if we were going to add it at all, um, that, the study sessions, uh, that, that we do not take action on study sessions, something.
Simple.
Yeah.
Something really simple.
I, so I would propose just add, study session, staff may be directed to bring materials back for future council, um, consideration, but no action will be taken at the study session. Something to that effect would be sufficient for now.
So, um, okay, so that's your.
Yeah.
Recommendation. And Councilmember Frum believed that we maybe we should study it a little later. I, I, I have.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, um, Councilmember Frum just shared a note with the city manager, and I was wondering if we could, as they said, share it with the whole class. Thank you.
We're just wondering if we want to ask the council to continue until a time for the second item to be considered.
Yes, okay. So let's finish this first. I think we're almost at the end. Um, so, uh, I, I am okay with, um, because, again, anything we decide and voted on later in the next meeting, it can be revis, I mean, this council has discretion to, um, to do otherwise. So these are just a general direction, and I do believe we haven't made any decisions during study session, even though there was a, um, you know, action item recommended on the study session. So I think this council is pretty flexible on that. I have no objection if we put this in as simple as recommended by Councilmember Moore. So I would like to suggest city attorney to come back with a proposal, uh, to add it, uh, sim- simpler languages.
So just to clarify, the, 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 the idea that, that, is that council would take no action? So, um, that, I, I, you know, just, just to be clear what that would mean, that would mean that there would be no direction from the full council at a study session to, uh, you know, to provide to staff to do future work. Um, we could certainly, uh, uh, you know, um, work around that by not identifying things in study sessions when we needed that kind of direction. But I, I just want to be, be clear that that's, that, that would be one of, that, the implication of, 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 of that kind of hard and fast rule.
Can I clarify?
Sure.
That's not my intent. I think, uh, I think council can give direction, even take vote on this informal direction to staff, but no final action should be taken, just like, uh, I think Rhoda brought up all the search that the nine years of study session. It stated, okay, study session, and then final action at a later date. So it, but it's okay, like climate action plan, we provide direction on what we would like to see, and then, and a revised version would come back. So that's the intent.
Okay, I, I, I understand the intent. I'll see what I can do.
Just our current practice.
I, 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 yeah, I understand the intent. I'll see what I can do as far as putting that in words.
Yeah, I think it's just following our current practice, not trying to change it, but clarify we don't want to take final action on a study session.
Okay, so are we okay with, um, asking, uh, city manager, uh, city attorney Jensen to come up with some language for us to consider? Uh, are we okay with that, or, um, we want to do another, uh, just maybe agenda item to talk about this? And not having this, um, um, be included in the, uh, next, um, included in the, um, manual? What, what is the pleasure of the council members?
So, uh, what are we saying, that, uh, we can.
Okay.
Leave it out for, for now, and then, and then the city attorney comes back with revised language?
I think when the procedure comes back, the city attorney would make a recommendation on some language. We may decide that's not clear.
So, so let's clarify the, um, options, uh, that on agenda. I think Councilmember Frum prefers we not including this, and then talk about it later on as an agenda item. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And Councilmember Chow wants this, uh, would like city attorney to come back with language along with this manual, um, in this, and, and the first meeting of February, to be included into this, uh, current manual. Is that correct?
Can, yes, but could I ask Councilmember Frum a clarification question? Um, why do, uh, what other things you would like to discuss about the item that merit a separate agenda item to talk about?
I think we can fold it into another discussion that we would almost certainly be having on later revisions anyway, and that feels more economical to me. I don't generally like adding additional language that I haven't seen. The first time that we will see that language is presumably when it comes back to us on the seventh of February.
Yeah, we have to vote on, is that, okay. So what's Councilmember Moore's intent, uh, shall we have a straw vote? Or you have more, um, recommendations?
I, I like what I was hearing from Councilmember Chow, and I trust the city attorney to come back with the language.
Along with the, uh, next, uh, the February, um, agenda. Okay, so we have two proposals. Do you have any more to add?
No, I'm, uh, so are we, uh, removing this from this, uh?
So the two proposal is, one is to remove it, not include it on the next, um, agenda item, and then talk about it, uh, as a, another separate agenda item, or when we come back to revisit. Uh, 'cause Councilmember Frum does not like to have a new agenda item, and then we have it decided right away next time. And, um, Councilmember Chow would like to put it, has city, uh, make, city attorney work on the language and come back together with this manual. So we are voting, straw voting on which one. So Councilmember Moore votes for Councilmember, um, Chow's proposal, right? Straw vote? Yes, okay. Councilmember Frum votes for his own, and you vote for yours, and Council, uh, Vice.
So mine is just, uh, the city attorney will provide the, the language that's simply clarifying the current practice.
Yes, and added into the.
The council give direction, study session does not take final action.
Right, but added into next, next.
Yeah.
With this manual. That's the difference between you and Councilmember Frum's, uh, okay. So, uh, Vice Mayor Mohan.
I'll go with Councilmember Frum's, uh, suggestion.
But I would go with Councilmember Frum's, too. I, I think we'd like to, the, do a little more discussion on this. And I'm not against it, okay, so I, I just think we should, um, discuss a little bit more. All right, so enforcement of rules and suspension of rules. Vice Mayor Mohan.
Before that, can I add an item that likely would fit into the scope when this comes back for revision? And I think it's something I have emailed city attorney about, about, uh, both Palau Auto and Berkeley council procedures include that agenda title should be descriptive to indicate the content, and then if, whether actions will be taken.
Are we adding something new to this manual?
Hmm, so I would like to add that, um.
Um, uh, city attorney Jensen.
Because, for example.
Can you advise on whether we could add new items to this?
So certainly, I mean, co- council has the ability to add new items to this. It's, it's this, it's, it's been agendized for, for discussion and, and, you know, action if council so chooses. Um, so, so certainly you have the ability to add new items. I, I would say, you know, agenda item descriptions are, are governed by the, the Brown Act, and it's a, you know, a short, uh, a, a, a brief statement of the items to be discussed. That's, you know, sufficient to apprise the public of, of, of the item to be considered. Generally, uh, twenty words or less is the recommendation in the Brown Act, although that's not a firm rule, and it's one that we often, um, exceed, um, in, in the verbiage of some of our agenda item descriptions. Um, so that's, um, y- y- you know, I, I am comfortable with the guidance provided by the, the Brown Act. If council wishes to provide additional guidance, of course, that's your discretion to do so.
Okay, so you would like to add one more?
Brown Act is a minimum standard. I think, um.
Okay, so my.
Other council members have thrived to, I think, the agenda item today specifically added including council ceremonial procedures. And it was added because city attorney, because of my comment to city attorney. And, but going forward, I would like to make it clear, this is something that helps the public, that the agenda title should be explicit about what the content.
So is your recommendation to add eight point thirteen on, on what your proposal, are you proposing?
So, maybe that should be added, uh, next time the con, procedure comes back with the study session item.
All right, if that's your proposal, so, I, I think we can, yeah.
Because this has happened, uh.
All right.
Um, code of ethics was never on the council agenda. It was approved as one item of seven.
Okay, so I don't think any action items needed now, right?
Yeah, the, I think going forward, we just should strive to be transparent.
Okay.
And explicit on what we are discussing, what we are approving, what actions we are taking.
Thank you. So let's move to number ten. Vice Mayor Mohan has a, uh, recommendation.
It's just very simple. I was, uh, everywhere I saw two-third, I would say three-fifth, so that's all that I'm saying.
In majority?
It's a majority.
Okay. Okay? Um, uh, if there's no further discussions, let's have a straw vote on this. Uh, Councilmember Frum?
Yeah, so I, I think that the, um, suspension of the rules is a rather extraordinary set of circumstances, so I would generally, um, prefer to leave this, uh, as it originally is written.
Okay, Councilmember Chow?
I will support Vice Mayor Mohan.
Um, oh, Councilmember Mohan, I, um, Vice Mayor Mohan, I apologize. I did not ask you to explain, but you did. You said, okay, you did. Uh, Councilmember Moore?
I support Vice Mayor Mohan's, um, recommendation or revision.
Councilmember Chow?
Oh, you asked me.
Yeah, already you supported?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, we already have three supports. You, you're gonna vote for yours. Okay, so that carries. Okay. Okay, this, is that the end of it? It is. So thank you so much for.
We have not reviewed the ceremonial procedure.
I don't think your mic is on Councilmember Chow. Microphone.
Oh, sorry.
So the ceremonial procedure is supposed to be under this agenda, too?
Mayorway, in the interest of time, um, I recommend to remove that, uh, policy altogether.
When we come back.
You can come back anytime. So in the interest of time, um, you could schedule another time.
Maybe we revise this.
Sure.
We can consider that.
Sure. Um, but I would like to, um, receive a motion from council, um, concluding your straw, uh, uh, poll vote in terms of when this can come back, on, under what format. And, um, I think Chris and I have taken enough notes in terms of what, um, detail needs to come back, but I will, if, if possible, we'd appreciate a, um, a motion from council on this item.
Okay, so, um, I do believe last time we motioned to have this study session and then have this item come back with a, um, version that's, according to our recommendations, come back in February. Um, you motioned that and said it could be on the consent agenda, uh, and so is that still our motion?
Yeah, so.
So that. Happy to make that motion, that we accept the straw vote, um, from this meeting. And the staff would come back with the revised, uh, take the direction from today's meeting and come back with the revised, the press, council procedures menu in the, the next regular meeting. But I do want to clarify and maybe include some of the future agenda items that were mentioned. I wasn't keeping track, so.
I think, uh, I think city manager have made notes of it.
So the direction will include bringing those agenda back, as the council had instructed.
I, I believe, a point of clarification, I believe the study session idea was brought up when council has adopted this policy and use it for some time, and if when you want to bring it back to further clarify, that's when you can, um, additionally add more policies and provisions to your existing policies. So we'll have a study session for you to consider and maybe examine how this policy has governed, and, and to add or delete any further provision.
In a future date.
Right, it will not be, for instance, a study session on special meeting. It will not be a study session on, um, enforcement. Yeah, so it will be a future study session on how you have lived with this new set of policies and what additions that, or re, um, or, uh, reduction that you would like to make.
That's not what I was referring to. Uh, I think there were some separate items.
Uh, the, the items you want to add maybe could be a, uh, recommended, um, agenda items?
That were not, that were not part of the council procedures that, but we were told it's not on today's agenda, and it should be brought.
So I've noted that, um, you, the council would like to have information on mayor's fund. So we'll provide a informational memo to council on that matter. Um, council would like to follow up on TBD. So let me do a cleanup of our current six-page TBD, and I will come back with a quarterly report as you just approved on the policy. Um, council would like to have exact time when your questions can be made it into the disk item, so I will be following up with mayor in terms of, um, the exact time and provide that to council. Um, council would like to have clarity on what qualifies for a, a consent agenda item. I will provide, again, an email to council from looking at other cities. Um, just now, there are two provisions, I think, one on spec, a study session, uh, that was proposed by Councilmember Chow, that could come back, uh, the way I understood is, um, when you are ready to make revision to your just currently adopted policy in the future. That will be a topic.
Hmm, I remember one, uh, is the mayor's initiative to fund the.
I, I, I mentioned that, that was the first thing.
That will come back, uh.
I, I thought you would like information, not as a study session, so I'll provide information on the current resolution as a starter.
And then we can decide whether we want to be a, a, a agenda item or not, right? Is that?
Oh, okay, that's different from what I remembered. I thought we, the straw vote was to keep the language, but then have, um, the resolution which was adopted a long time ago to come back.
Councilmember Frum, you have your hands on it, pardon? You have something to say?
Yeah, I think the only other specific thing that we had some general consensus on was the concept of, um, colleagues' memos and, um, having further discussion and study on that.
Yeah, that, I think, I think these two item, we would like to, and another is the public comment interliving pub, uh, virtual and in-person, right? That need, needs more discussion.
I don't know if the virtual speaker card was a study session item. Um, as I mentioned, I need more time to talk to staff to see the viability of that item, and, and then I'll, I'll communicate that to, uh, council or to mayor directly.
Okay, so, um, so the directions from today and, uh, a future agenda item for the. Okay, so, so the directions from today and the future agenda item for the colleagues' memo and the Mayor's Initiative, the rest of minor items will be rolled into a potential future revision of the council procedure.
Mayorway, if I can get clarification from the council, I don't know if there was a council majority supporting a study session on the Mayor's Fund and also the colleagues. My understanding was more research and provide information.
So, so I'd like to, oh, councilmember Moore, you want to say something first? I would like to make a motion, actually.
Okay, I didn't hear a comment about travel policy.
All right.
So I would like to make a motion that the city attorney and city manager come back with a clean version of what our straw vote have recommended. So that we can put it on the agenda for next regular meeting and provide all the information that we just said to council so that we can move forward, whether we want to do it or not. But so, so I would like to have a clean version that's definitely been decided by this council for approval of in the regular meeting. But all the rest of the information, I think city manager caught almost all of it, would be information items that come back to the council so that we have more information to decide what items we want to add to agenda item or study session, because I think we don't have information to decide right now. Is that a, do we have a second? Or, let's have a second, then we can discuss it. Okay.
I'll second that.
Open up for discussions.
But I specifically remember for the colleagues' memo, we had majority for that as a study session and we had majority for the Mayor's Initiative.
But let's have some more information, then we can propose a study session. How's that?
So it's important that we have clarification on that and the travel policy. I think it's, yeah, it's a good idea that we get.
More information first, is that okay?
Before we, to come back from the, in the next meeting. So basically, a report on the straw votes.
So we have motion and a second. Can we move on the vote or more discussions?
So are we going to get the, you're looking for a report on the straw votes?
And revise the council procedures to come back.
Okay, and so my concern is that we only have about eleven people that have tuned in and to this. And I'm hoping that the staff report is going to be very comprehensive about all of these changes because they are, like mentioned before, truly significant. And I haven't seen anything like this in, in forever. So I think the public really needs to be informed about that.
Absolutely.
It's.
This is our second study session and it's being from four to ten thirty. So I think we caught everybody's attention. And yes, we are going to make this very clear and public. So any more comments from, before we vote?
I just want to make sure that the motion is sufficiently clear to the city manager and the city attorney in terms of what's expected.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Madam City Attorney, we have a voting by light, please.
Motion carries with more voting now.
All right, thank you. Now, we, I don't think we have time for the second item. So what's the pleasure of the council to do with the second item? I recommend we put it to the next regular meeting as an action item.
I know it's getting late. We started at four o'clock, Mayorway, before council takes a vote. The staff report is pretty self-explanatory. In the interest of time, I would skip the presentation and go straight to my recommendation. And I'll take any questions at the point where public is ready and council is ready. I would recommend council start on the discussion as February seven is a packed agenda and so is February twenty first, so is March seven, and so is the remainder. Then we're getting to CIP and budget. We will be discussing the grand jury report in the coming council meeting. So I know this is a late hours and I am hating myself for saying this, but if there is any will by the council to start the conversation, and like I said, more than happy to skip the presentation and get to the questions portion.
So let's pull the council, if we do a half hour study session, no, a half hour to start to talk about it? Any, anyone approves, councilmember Moore says no? Councilmember Fruen?
I'm game.
You're okay? And councilmember Chow?
I don't want to skip the staff presentation. I think this is a significant item that the public needs that information.
Okay, so I'm okay with starting the staff presentation, just get, and then have a quick discussion before we can, okay, so.
Yes, I'm okay and we may, we may just surprise ourselves and get it done.
Yeah, so, councilmember Moore, we have a majority who would like to go forward.
I hear that. I also don't see the members of these commissions and committees that you're trying to ax. And that's, that's really disturbing. So they're not here for this presentation, they're not here for this discussion. I don't know if they were all informed that this was happening right now. So I really have a problem with that. This is not transparent.
If I may, I do believe this is a publicly, publicly special meeting that everybody knows. If it's, can I have council, city attorney or city manager putting this?
Sure, I'll take a stab at it and Chris and Kirsten jump in. This item has been on both the January seventeen and January twenty fifth agenda. It's been publicly agendized. It is on the city's website. We do not make a point of providing the staff report or a, a special reminder to the commissioners or the committee members as this is a council policy. But, I mean, I believe this item has been adequately agendized for the Brown Act purpose.
Yeah, nothing bad, I mean, council, it's council's discretion to discuss it.
All right, thank you. So can we proceed with the staff report, please?
Sure.
So am I running the presentation?
Sure. Okay, thank you. So this is a study session regarding city's commissions and committees. Next slide. The objective for this item is to, sorry Kirsten.
Sorry.
No worries. I know we want to go fast, but not that fast. So this is the received direction from city council to consolidate not all of the commissions or committees, but certain ones, given that they're similar in duties and responsibility. And if council decides to move forward, staff appreciates council's direction to proceed with necessary municipal code amendments to come back in a public hearing and the first reading and second reading, where the ordinance will become effective thirty days after. Next slide. Agenda for tonight is introduction, as I just mentioned, and provide background on existing committees that city has in addition to the existing commissions and committees that the city has. What's not on the agenda is I will briefly go over the subcommittees that has been created by council probably in two thousand twenty one and mostly two thousand and twenty two. I will also briefly talk about the commissions and committees in other cities within our county. And I will end my presentation with the staff's recommendation and entertain any questions from the council. Next slide. So as I mentioned, I'll start with some background information. What I did is I pulled the table from the staff report, but color-coded the commission with the responsible department liaison in a different color. You will see that Arts and Parks and Rec is colored in green, Public Works in brown, Community Development in blue, and I believe city managers later on, you will see in red and Admin Services in black. This is a way to help me visualize the amount of commissions that each department oversees. For instance, Arts and Culture Commission and their responsibilities are laid out in the table. Reports and it has a staff liaison with the Parks and Rec Department. And Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission reports and coordinates with Public Works. The Housing Commission, along with the Planning Commission, works strictly and closely with Community Development. The Library Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, again falls under the Parks and Rec Department. Next slide. So it continues, as I mentioned, the Planning Commission is a major commission that not only is an advisory commission, but also can make certain decisions on entitlements on behalf of the city council that is coordinating closely with Community Development Department. The Public Safety Commission and Sustainability Commission now has liaisons through the city manager's office through the Sustainability Division and the Emergency Services Division. Team Commission is one of our most popular commission, will be the fourth commission that the Parks and Rec Department coordinates and supports. And Technology Information Communication Commission, the TIC Commission, again, it has a purple color that coordinates strictly, closely with Information and Technology Department. Next slide. So in addition to the city commissions, we also have a number of committees. The first one, again in blue, Administrative Hearing Committee. These are bodies that hear certain entitlements and projects that are called out by our municipal code. And the chief building official or other staff liaison in Community Development Departments is the major support. The Audit Committee is responsible and supported by the Administrative Service Department. The Design Review Committee is another committee that the Community Development Department supports. Based on my information, the Design Review Committee hasn't really been regularly meeting. And, but it is a standing committee that is currently codified in our code. The Disaster Council meets annually and it's also supported by the city manager's office, the Emergency Services. The newly formed Economic Development Committee is another committee that the city manager's office, the Economic Development Division, that supports. Next slide. Environmental Review Committee and Housing Element Community Engagement Plan, the CEP Committee are two additional committees that Community Development Department supports in addition to Legislative Review Committee that is currently liaison through the city manager's office. There is one more committee, and I apologize for the omission, is the Sister City Commission that didn't get into this table in the first staff report. Council will find a supplemental memo included in your packet that explains staff's recommendation to remain the Sister City Committee as this carries a very different function than the rest of the committee. Next slide. In addition to the city's commissions and committees, there are also a number of subcommittees that the city's staff and council members were appointed to and that provide specific functions. Again, I color-coded to the earlier department liaison just for visualization. There was a Audit Expansion Subcommittee, a Bidding and Contract Process Subcommittee, Bob Rowe Subcommittee, City Hall Renovation, Community Funding. These are the committees are no longer, either no longer active or has concluded its function that has been continued. Next slide. This, in addition to the subcommittee that I previously mentioned that has concluded its function, there are a number of committees that are kind of still going or have been formed but doesn't have any council members appointed. For instance, the Legislative Aid Selection Subcommittee, the Summer Intern Application Review Committee, the Homeless Subcommittee, or the Festival Fee Waiver Subcommittee. So these five additional subcommittees, in addition to the seventeen or eighteen committees and commissions, will make a total of over twenty bodies that staff is currently supporting. In addition, next slide. So this table shows a comparison chart that was prepared for council's consideration in February of two thousand twenty two. I have yet to update this chart based on the current population. I would like to point out that, given our population size, roughly sixty-six thousand people, we support seventeen committees and commissions, not including the subcommittees, where if you were looking at a similar jurisdiction, say Palo Alto, just slightly less than our population, they support a total of fourteen committees and commissions. Next slide. Again, this is a table that was provided, provided to council in the February two thousand twenty-two staff report that's kind of estimate or estimate the total amount of hours that staff typically spend on a given commission or a committee. For instance, Housing Commission average spends about two hundred and twenty hours. You will ask why that many hours are spent. So these are hours that would be equally distributed amongst department liaisons, admin support, clerk's office, city attorney's office, city manager's office, or even the video support and down to facility to make sure that everything is prepared. When you add all the commissions estimating hours together, you're looking at about over three thousand hours of staff time to support in addition to roughly eight hundred hours spent on the committees. Combine the two, you're looking at about forty-five hundred hours of staff time in addition to their daily work. So what I have done is to highlight the potential of consolidating some of these committees and commissions. For instance, if council were to direct staff to consolidate the Economic Development Committee, the Environmental Review Committee, and Design Review, and the Legislative Review Committee, that will put a saving of over six hundred hours of staff time towards supporting these committees and commissions. Next slide. So in summary, staff's recommendation from councils are threefold. We're hoping to receive direction from council to, number one, consolidate certain commissions and committees as we recommended in the staff report, to discontinue all of the previously formed subcommittees that are either no longer active or have not really have any appointments made. And finally, to proceed with any preparation of necessary ordinance amendment to come back to council, and this could be as early as February seven. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Council questions? I think we, that's limited to three minutes so that we can go. Let's go to council questions. Can we just do a three-minute question, please? Because to me, this item has been, this is the second time and I read it very carefully, back and forth, and did some research. So I, and I ask my questions ahead of time. Go ahead. Anybody wants to go first?
Okay.
Councilmember Moore? Please keep it short, please, thank you.
So, the subcommittees that mentioned, many of them have not even met, right? So I think it's good to clarify that. Some of them, I don't think they would ever has met, so.
So to mayor, if I may, so Kirsten, if you can help me pull that slide. I think it's the second slide for the subcommittee. I did clarify, and also in the staff report, that these are the committees that were recently formed by city council.
Yeah, I have those here.
But have not, either have the council members appointed, therefore they cannot meet.
No, not this one. This one that says no longer active. As far as I know.
The next one.
Yeah, this is, this is what I'm asking.
Oh.
Yeah. So it says no longer active. As far as I know, the Farmers Market Subcommittee never really required the city staff time. We just met with the ANSA and the Farmers Market Provider to connect them with Fremont Union and when they were exploring different options. Fiscal Strategic Plan Committee, I think that has, I don't think it has ever met the four years I was on the council. And Community Funding Grant, we did provide a recommendation to the council. And Bob Rowe Subcommittee, I think that's already concluded. But the bidding contract process and audit expansion, have they ever met?
I don't believe so.
So those are not met, right?
So they're no longer active.
Yeah, I mean, this is not a good representation of staff time if we, that's what we are talking about. Many of them are formed but never really required staff time to support. That's the point I want to make. And some of these next, the ones in the next page, I said, no one were assigned either. I think Summer Intern and Legislative Aid has some council member assigned, but never met also. So just want to clarify that. And I asked the staff, in addition. And I asked the staff, in addition to this, I think staff included some committees that have no council member or public member sitting on them, like the design review committee and administrative hearing committee. And so my question to staff is trying to understand the workload. There are other committees that not listed here, staff also is supporting such as the safe route to school committee. They have weekly or monthly work group meeting, and they produce newsletter. And then the chamber of commerce legislative action committee, the staff attends regularly and generate a report to them, and staff also attend to make presentation. And the senior center advisory committee that I think is not listed here either. And I, there is a youth activity board, that's also a staff committee that the staff is supporting, and I do want to know how many other similar committees I'm not aware of, and how much is the staff time spent on those committee? And let's keep in mind, commissions and committees that the public spend their time to volunteer, to sit on them, are an essential element for public agency like us to receive input, provide a channel of communication. And the staff committee, then it's a different method, so if we want to look at the time, let's look at all of them. Thank you.
So it looks that we have more committees.
Mayor, your microphone is not on.
Oh, sorry.
Any other questions from other council members? Yep.
Yes.
Keep it short, please, three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. So with regards to the legislative aid selection subcommittee, I believe the mayor and myself were assigned to that. And I thought that the summer intern application review subcommittee was Mayor Wei and council member Chow. The homelessness subcommittee, I was, I guess, assigned to it, but it only met one time, and it was its final time. And the festival fee waiver subcommittee, we had hoped that it would be a continuation of the council member Chow and myself because we had worked on the grant subcommittee and presented our information to the council already. But the festival fee waiver subcommittee, we were hoping to have it continue on with the chair and the vice chair of the Parks and Rec Commission because we had already met, as you know, with the director of Parks and Rec. So that actually made sense. With regards to these comparisons here, showing the cities in Santa Clara County in our comparison there, it doesn't always reflect the number of meetings, or actually, I should say, it does not reflect the number of meetings that are held. So when you mentioned the environmental review committee, I believe it meant, met three times last year. The legislative review committee has had a very robust discussions regarding the legislation that's impacting us, and every year we're ending up with hundreds of bills to look at, and it sounds as though we are retaining the lobbyist, Gonzales. So I'm not sure why that would be slated to have removed. And since you're trying to have seven weeks of vacation off, you're trying to end these council meetings at eleven-thirty, and have all of these items brought onto council to look at, I'm not really sure that that's a realistic goal. And then I had tried to mention earlier that the audit committee is, the staff recommendation was to abolish some of their current duties, which would then throw those duties onto the city council. So I think, well, we'll get into the deliberations, but I think you, perhaps there's going to be some serious unforeseen consequences with this removal. And I really look forward to hearing from the actual members of the economic development committee what they, what they think about this because we just interviewed them.
So thank you, councilmember Moore. Any other comments from, questions from the floor? Have other councilmembers putting their questions?
Sure. I was hoping that the city attorney could opine on the potential for a conflict of interest on the part of the environmental review committee, and then the member of the planning commission and the member of council that sit on that committee who would then subsequently be hearing matters that had been reviewed by the ERC.
So there is, there is the potential for not necessarily a conflict of interest, but a due process issue that would arise if you have somebody who is sitting on a committee that's conducting preliminary review of a project, ultimately making a decision about whether to approve that project. You know, that can be avoided if the commissioner and council member sitting on the ERC are scrupulous about, you know, limiting their commentary to what's within the jurisdiction of the ERC. But it does take care from those members to avoid creating a due process issue that would arise if they, if they committed or made suggestions about the merits of a project one way or another in advance of the public hearing because the applicant does have a due process right to have the decision made based on the evidence presented at the hearing.
Pardon. Sir, the mayor.
Thank you. If councilmember Moore would like to ask the question, I'd just ask that my time be stopped.
Okay. Councilmember Moore, please.
I'd like to respond. So to city attorney, I have been sharing the ERC for the past four years, two on planning and two on counsel. I have not been informed of a single complaint. If anything, I've been praised for adding training to that, making sure that we had, we had attorneys come and inform us of what our duties. So were there complaints that you've, that you've heard?
I'm not aware of any due process violations as a result of the conduct of the ERC. As I said, as long as due care is taken, it's manageable. It is an unusual structure, and perhaps the due process issues are part of that, but I'm not aware of any complaints.
Thank you. And I think if anything, I've erred on, on the side of not, not expanding the discussion and to be sure of, of following those rules.
So in follow-up, are there any other cities that have an ERC structured the way that ours is?
I haven't been, I have not been able to identify any in California.
Thank you. Any more questions? Not comment, but questions?
Question?
I think you have your three minutes already. Can you save it for your comment? Okay. So what's the city manager? Do you have your, no? So right now, we are approaching ten minutes to eleven. Is that right? Yes. So do we want to open up public comment at this time? How many cars do we have, Kirsten?
We have three comments in-house, mayor, and we have, I see, three hands raised in Zoom.
So I guess we have time to listen to the public comments? Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. Take, so we have Peggy Griffin, Jennifer Griffin, and Lisa Warren. Peggy, welcome.
I understand the desire to reduce the amount of staff time needed to support commissions and committees, but I think there must be a sweet spot where you can accomplish this without losing so much functionality. I am concerned about the following. The environmental review committee, this committee is a critical, has a critical job to protect the current and future people who live and work in Cupertino by reviewing all discretionary projects that aren't exempt for evaluation for CEQA. The members of this committee were actually trained so they would be familiar with the issues. Environmental reviews can take time, and they should not be stuffed into a packed agenda that encourages items to be passed on consent or rushed. They need to be reviewed thoroughly by a committee, by committee members that are familiar with the material, who have other items, that, who don't have other items on the agenda. If it takes eighty hours annually, so be it. If it will protect the current and future health and safety of construction workers and members of the public, it also protects the city against future litigation from health issues that arise due to exposure to contaminants. I request that you keep this committee and make sure that the members are trained. Design review committee, I'm going to skip what I said, but please, my request is, oh, the staff report is confusing because on page one, it says that it will be rolled in the functions that were previously designated for design review committee and environmental review committee would go into planning. But then on page five, it says that it'll be as needed or as appropriate. So which is it? You need to be clear. You can't just do it on the fly. Legislative review committee uses four-hundred hours. That's a lot of time, but it's necessary with this, with our continuing changing laws. The city needs to be proactive, and the way to do it is to have a committee focused on this. As you see, everything gets stuffed in consent and passed in one vote. Economic development committee, the reason this was created was because it was a de facto behind-the-scenes committee, and the public wasn't, it wasn't visible. It was a privileged meeting between city staff and the chamber. This way, the public has information. As we have seen recently, the new city way is to stuff everything under consent and don't allow the public to pull items. That's what will happen to all the ERC and DRC and legislative items. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, city council. I'm going to talk about a lot of stuff because we obviously didn't get to talk about anything for the last four hours, and you guys were making a lot of decisions that the public had no control over, and I'm very, very concerned about. Yeah, I've been coming here for twenty-two years, but I have never seen anything like this manual put together. No one used to mess with the agenda, maybe two times a year, and we discussed it. I don't like this new type of politics that's come in here. You guys have been sitting on the city council for, what, two weeks, three weeks? So already, we have a brand-new manual about what we can't and can't do. The public can't say anything. Are we in nursery school? And then we're getting, okay, the other thing is, we're getting rid of committees. That, to me, is a red flag for shut the public up. I'm sorry, my brother was a National Guard member, and he died from multiple myeloma. The family's belief is that it was from places where he was stationed. Multiple myeloma is a product of contamination from PCBs, et cetera, et cetera. He was forty-nine years old. He was a National Guard member. I don't take lightly that we are getting rid of the environmental review committee. My brother might be alive today if areas that he was stationed at had been properly cleaned or disclosed to the public. I don't take his life lightly. My family has not recovered from his loss. He was a psychologist, he was also a youth minister leader, and he was a National Guard member. His loss is something that the world, you know, he should still be here. He has a grieving widow who has not recovered, and I am not willing to sacrifice my city to having environmental contamination kill other people. This is, yeah, we can laugh about it, let's roll the ERC away. I don't really care that Cupertino is the only city that have it, that has the ERC. We have it for a reason. We need to find out why. There are areas in this city that need to be looked at, et cetera, et cetera. Design review committee, yeah, okay, a couple of years ago, we had ERC regularly, we had DRC, and it, this city worked. Are you saying that everything that was done in the last twenty-two years was not good enough? That really, really sets up signals. And legislative review committee, believe me, that thing pays for itself. We have a lot of bad things that are happening in this state right now, and the more that the public knows about it, the better. I don't want contamin, I don't want other people to die because they're subject to contaminations where they live. And, okay, I'd like to make the historical society, historical committee.
Thank you, Jennifer. That is your time.
A city-level committee. It is in Los Altos. And that's good enough for them.
And Lisa Warren is our final speaker. Welcome, Lisa.
Hi. So Peggy always, she always goes before me, and she always hits a lot of the same spots. So I'm thankful for that, and I guess I'll be able to keep this a little shorter. Collapsing all the subcommittees may not be the greatest idea. I realize that some aren't. They're not viable at this point. However, I would consider that you continue to hold a spot for the City Hall renovation subcommittee because there's already new fluff coming out about changing, potentially changing what has already been decided by that committee after hours of service and good work with staff. And so you may just need it again. You will likely need it again, and it's a very worthwhile committee, and I hope that if it continues, councilmember Moore remains on it because she's done the work. Also, given we don't, what we, that we don't know what will happen with our housing element, we may still need the Bob Road Subcommittee because that's not something that's out of the, we're out of the woods yet. So just consider maybe putting it on hold, but not getting rid of it. Environmental review committee, Peggy was spot-on with everything she said, and I'm sure she had more to say. There was a comment from the city attorney that you need scrupulous people in that committee not to have due process issues, and you had that in Kitty Moore, and now she's no longer on that committee, which is a shame, but it certainly should not be a committee that is done away with. The fact that we have it and have had it for quite some time is a good thing, and we need it more than ever when the state continues to neglect the environment and allow their bills to stomp all over what we should be caring about. Design review committee, that's something that is rarely used. Six months ago, I checked, and I think it was three, they had three meetings within two-year period, but it's not because it shouldn't be used. It should be used. It's not being used the way it is, was designed to be. Too often, issues that should have gone to design review are just handled as a director of community development makes a vote on his own, and if you go back and look at what those decisions have been, many of them should never have been solely the director's discretion. Uh-oh. Okay, I'm going to skip legislative review committee, which needs to stay. You've got the lobbyists, use them in the right way. Economic development, this was just created, people were chosen, it's important to keep it for multiple reasons, and I'm out of time.
Thank you, Lisa. That's my turn. Thank you. And so Lisa was our final speaker in community hall. Now we will move to Zoom. We have four people with their hands raised, Donna Austin, Rota Frye, Louise Sadadi, and Tessa Parrish. Welcome, Donna. I will allow you to unmute.
Okay. Am I unmuted? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I totally support the consolidation of all of these commissions. They can easily be consolidated. It's just a waste of our precious staff and hours, that's four-hundred hours for legislative review. It's just a waste of our precious staff and hours, not 400 hours for Legislative Review. I would certainly support the recommendation. After watching this last item, one item, like, item one, six and a half hours, and it was two people that did all the talking, talked and talked and questioned and talked and talked and opinions, it doesn't give this, the public any chance to talk when the City Council is talking all the time. I think they should be limited. But consolidate, definitely consolidate these commissions, eliminate the ones that aren't even, the committees that aren't even being meeting. And I just totally agree with the recommendation by the city manager, and I recommend that you adopt it for efficiency. The grand jury report showed and said, stated, things that Kitty Moore had done, and one of them is asking all these questions and using staff time and not going through the city manager. We need to make our meetings more efficient so that real governing can happen. San Jose Mercury News said we were the least efficient city as far as our meetings are getting anything done. It's pretty sad, and having all of these commissions and committees, and it's not helping the public get more input. In fact, it's scattering instead of consolidating, and I highly recommend that you follow what the city manager says. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Next, we have Rota Frye, followed by Louise Sedadi, followed by Tessa Parish. Welcome, Rota.
Hi, good evening. I concur with both Ms. Griffins and Ms. Walton. We are having massive changes in land use, much of it from commercial, and that, commercial allows more ground solution than residential, and all of the other myriad of issues that go with it. Look no further than Bayview in San Francisco and look at the generational illness and premature mortality due to the failure of the city to do due diligence. Look, Jennifer said succinctly, this is, we're shutting the public up. This is no good. You know, it's much easier to cancel a meeting than it is to revive a commission such as the Design Review. Design Review didn't meet at all last year. So, you know, that, whatever the 40 hours are, it didn't happen. They were saved, but it'll be harder to put it back. So please retain Design Review, Environmental Review, Economic Development Committee. I was so excited about that coming on board, and especially the Legislative Review Committee. I learned so much from Jennifer Griffin coming in and talking about what's going on with legislation. We really need that in our city. Please retain the Design Review Committee and Environmental Review Committee. These committees already do not meet very often, and it would be much easier, as I said, to keep them on standby than to have them, reform them if necessary. City of Los Altos actually has a Design Review Commission. It isn't even a committee. Don't we want to make Cupertino a better place to live? The types of people who serve on Design Review are going to be somewhat different than the types of people who serve on Planning Commission. Someone who serves on Design Review has a narrower focus and specific expertise. The same is true for Environmental Review Committee. Many of these meetings are, as I said, are already being canceled, so let's keep them penciled in in case they're needed. Again, specific interest slash expertise is required for this work. You might have an architect serve on Design Review and an environmental specialist serve on the Environmental Review Committee. Members on one would not likely serve on the other. Moreover, having a meeting of people with a specific focus on a specific topic will yield superior results and advice to the Planning Commission, and that's exactly what we're doing right here tonight. We're having a specific meeting on these specific things, and so we need to keep these special meetings around for Design Review, Environmental Review, Economic Development, and Legislative Review Committee. Also want to, there's a quote in there, "Council discontinue all previously formed subcommittees and delegate areas of concerns to the city manager to review and research." This is really troubling. It should be up to the City Council to determine whether a subcommittee is needed. And, hey, I'm going to stay under, I'm going to stay two and a half minutes and wish you good night. Thank you. It's past my bedtime.
Thank you, Rota. And our next speaker is Louise Sedadi. Welcome, Louise.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, so this is Louise Sedadi, and I am speaking in favor of consolidating the, all the different commissions and the committees and the subcommittees and the, everything, because what it does is that adds layer and layer and layer and makes things less transparent, because your typical resident cannot tear it out and go through all these different committees to get to the facts. And the goal of the council and any committee should be efficiency, efficiently, because this is, I think that the city should, goal should be good governance with transparency and less bureaucracy. This is the first time I've heard people shouting for more government, more bureaucracy. I went, more bureaucracy? And everybody has their favorite committee or pet project, and yes, I understand that, and if we kept everybody's favorite committee and commission and whatever, it would just keep growing and growing, and then pretty soon, it, government run amok, and basically, less is more. If we have our council meetings run with less repetitive talking, some people seem to repeat their statement over and over again when the point is mute because three or four people already passed the point, passed the item, but the, but speaking and taking up a lot of time causes the meetings that end up being unmanageable. And the same thing goes with having all these extra committees and commissions. The goal should be not everybody getting to keep their favorite commission and committee and subcommittee. The goal of everybody should be efficient government that is transparent because you have less layers and impediments. So you can make things less transparent by adding more committees, subcommittees, et cetera, and so on, to overwhelm residents that cannot stay up until 11 o'clock when they're working. So upon that note, I'm going to prove that less is more by stopping here, and I would appreciate it if, when people speak at the council, that they keep it short and to the point. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. And our final speaker on Zoom is Tessa Parish. Welcome, Tessa.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity. I would like to suggest the keeping of the Environmental Review Committee. The committees that were mentioned previously by Lisa, the Audit Committee, the Design, so we're, I'm, I'm in the Housing Commission. I'm vice chair, and only speaking as myself today, but I know the housing element is bringing a lot of new properties on the property, on the, onto our agendas, and we cannot, I don't, I don't think you realize how much more work there's going to be if these committees are not in place. And if you, I don't know how many people have attended the Planning Commissions, but they are long and incredibly burdened already, heavy lifting, and, and I wanted to recommend the same thing, adding an environmental commission. We are growing as a city. If we're going to have 4,300 more units added to it, we're going to be bigger, and we can't be shrinking. We actually need to expand. So for those people that are asking for less, even though, I don't know, I mean, I mean, I don't know if they've served in the commission and they know, but it takes a lot of work, and it does take more work to be transparent. The, the meetings have to be public, et cetera. Adding this to the city, to the council or planning would be incredible. So I wanted to bring a point about Kitty and, and the attacks that have been made on this, because I've known Kitty even before, when she was reading the initial Environmental Review documents for Valco. She found items that had not been discovered by the previous count, not two councils ago. She found items that were not reported anywhere. I spoke at that council meeting that there was a Phase One environmental report calling for a Phase Two. One was not done, and yet it was passed. Who caught it and who caught the, the rest of it was Kitty. She has read through tomes of documents, and so, because she's qualified and knowledgeable. And so a, a, at the time, of course, I know nothing about it, so that information was not shared with me until years later when it came up. Now that she's in council, in the council meeting, I got to hear them and the meetings of what was discovered, and now that there does indeed need to be, you know, talks, that there is toxic soil that needs to be cleaned up, and I think that's extremely important. Now, let's, let's, let's please consider that the council members, the majority right now, were in support of, of Valco and were, were against the Phase Two environmental report being done at the time I was there in the meeting. So I, I can't help but feel that this is almost an attack and like, it has an agenda.
Thank you, Tessa. That was your time, Mayor. I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. I want to say that we are still operating on the previous, because we haven't made any changes, so I would like to see if we can open up for council deliberation for five minutes each, because I think our goal was to end it by midnight still. If that's okay with the council members, I could do a straw poll. Is that good for, because right now we're hot, we hear a lot of, lot of opinions, so it's good to have a deliberation, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to continue to the extent that there are members of the public who would still like to be able to comment on the issue. Most of these items, if not all of them, are codified in the municipal code, which means that they would have to be brought back as new ordinances to amend the, the municipal code, which means that they will show up on a future agenda item.
Okay. All right, are you okay with continuing this a little bit? I'm okay with it too, so. So I'm going to open up for council deliberation, five minutes each, please, because we have about 45 minutes left. But for the sake of deliberation, I'd like to entertain a motion and a second, so we can deliberate what is going to be deliberate on our motion and second. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the staff recommendation.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
So now we have a motion and a second. We're going to open up for deliberation. Please be considerate and limit your discussion to five minutes. And who would like to speak first? Seeing none, maybe I will speak first. Usually, I try to speak last. I really want to make really clear, this is not to diminish any public participation, and I would like to say, this is not a final decision. The staff recommendation that has been on the motion being made in second is for staff to come back with reports, with items, so that we can further discuss it. So that, I want to make it very clear, this is not saying that we are going to consolidate right away, and it, it's like Councilmember Frum said, they're going to come back with ordinances when we still have time to public comment, discuss it. So it is really not the final final, to me. It is not final. But to consolidate, to me, right now, is an urgent matter. First, we do have, short of staff. Second, we do have lots of things to do, and I think you hear City Council, City Manager says how many things we need to do, but we don't want to diminish public comment or public participation. So we're still going to have 13, if every consolidation comes through, 13 commission and committees. So we're not going to say we don't want to listen to the public. It just from today, from 4:00 to now, we are listening to the public. So we're hoping that the public understand what we're trying to do right now is for staff to come back with their recommendations so that we can take a realistic look of what can we do, still be transparent, still do all this, what we need to do, not to ruin the environment, and not to ruin the design, but really consolidate what we can do with the best input, with the most efficient staff time, and still move forward as a city. So that is the, I would like to make a comment that, because we get, yes, we, I understand to take away something, some really not changes are hard, but it doesn't mean that we cannot add things back. Let, let's try this and consolidate, get good governments coming on first, and then we can see what we need to do to add, to, to move forward, to really, the current needs may not be what the past needs are. So I just want to say that we are, we are moving, I would love to move forward with this so we can hear more from the staff. So I'm going to make comments like that about two minutes and 30 seconds. So anybody else want to chime in, please? And Vice Mayor Mohan?
Thank you, Mayor Way. I looked at this staff report, and I did not see anything that said any, there's, there will be less of public input, that there will be less of responsibilities that the city manager engages in, city manager and staff engages in. So all this is doing is taking away subcommittees and consolidating them. It doesn't mean the functions are going away. The functions are being absorbed by other departments, and, and these are committees that don't meet every month, and, and so the, they meet less frequently, and, and as you pointed out, Mayor Way, this is a document, or these are things that can be changed if they don't work. None of this is cast in stone. We can always come back and make changes if there is a need for another subcommittee or, or expanding an activity. So I, I'm not sure we, we should not try this because it definitely reduces staff time, it increases efficiency, and it doesn't take away from the public getting an opportunity to comment on things that are important to the community.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to put in? Councilmember Chow, please.
Okay, so I looked at the agenda, Economic Development, and, no, sorry, Environmental Review and Design Review Committee does meet very infrequently, or none at all in a year, or maybe at most three in one of the year. So as reflected by the hours here, and they are nimble because it's either two Planning Commission or one council member, one commission. So merging that into a bigger commission, I don't understand, it seems to be taking more time rather than less, and with people who are not as specialized. And Legislative Review, actually, I agree that we can remove that. For Economic Development, I think it was formed to solve a problem, and I have asked the staff, if you propose to remove that, I would like to see a proposed solution to solve that problem. I have not received that. And the problem was, we had, Cupertino really needs to diversify our revenue, tax revenue source, especially now we might reduce much, we might receive much reduced tax revenue from Apple. And so I asked, how, our current economic development manager of one person, even though she is full-time compared with 30 hours before, 10 more hours, but then how will one person be able to reach out to a diverse industry of experts who could provide input to help Cupertino look at different industries that might bring, be interested in setting up shop in Cupertino? How can we make our city more friendly to these businesses if we don't talk to people who actually run them? How do we know? And I, so I think if we want to remove that, I would like to see a solid proposal of how that can be achieved by city staff only because it hasn't worked before. Then how, what has changed that would make it work? I need to know that before I can make a decision on that. And then the Environmental Review also, I think it's important to. It feels like consolidating, but then you still need to do the same amount of work. So moving that to planning, you still need to support that meeting. How is that going to improve time? And I, like I mentioned in my previous five question, I would like to also understand the staff hours spent on all those committees I mentioned earlier. So we have a broader picture of all the hours spent on these other committees many people don't even know about, there might be others. And some of the subcommittees, I think we, next time this comes back, we should have actual number of meetings or staff, staffed meetings for those subcommittees. So we have a clear picture of exactly how much time, rather than just discount the total number of them. But I do agree, some of the subcommittee should go and the Palo Alto, I think, or Berkeley, they have, I proposed that to the City Attorney, they have a specific procedure on how the subcommittee should be appointed and maybe those are, with the good council procedure we adopt, maybe you will have a more defined process to, to handle subcommittee, maybe that would be better. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Chow, next. Do we, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. So I'm looking at Agenda Packet Page, PDF fifty over sixty. The first committee is the Administrative Hearing Committee, that's not a committee from the City Council, that's a staff committee, I don't understand why that is in our table. With regards to Audit Committee, I've mentioned this previously, in the last Audit Committee meeting on Monday, the staff recommendation was that they would review the monthly, I mean the quarterly Treasurer's Investment Report. That report is a report given to the city by Chandler and US Bank. And that recommendation removes the Audit Committee's duty to look at the receipts, disbursements, and fund balances, which is something that then moves it to just City Council. And the reason why it's better for us to have this at Audit Committee is because we get a first check-in and somebody already looking through those documents before it gets to council. With regards to Design Review, again, it doesn't, it meets so infrequently, there's no good reason to, to completely abolish that. Economic Development Committee, the Economic Development Committee had been meeting for, for decades. And it was four members of staff with four members of the chamber, one member of the Planning Commission, and two members of the City Council. It was not codified. And finally, we, we got it codified in the municipal code two point ninety-six point zero one zero. And, you know, the, the reasoning for it is, is great, the purpose enhances and promotes a strong local economy to provide municipal services that businesses and residents desire and need to maintain the community's quality of life. Cupertino is really challenged with our local economy because of the borders that we have and the existence of Apple taking up seventy percent of our, a little over seventy percent of our commercial space. Home Depot, as you know, is not in Cupertino. So you're not able to go buy your refrigerator, your power tools and all in, within Cupertino. We have, you know, very limited places for that. The median household income is over a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. You look at where you, where you can buy your clothes or, or shoes, it's very, very limited choices here. So, and the mall is closed down, so we're heading off to other cities. And that's why we have this incredible retail leakage. That's why we need the environmental, I mean, the Economic Development Committee to be here and be active and be, you know, we just had a report provided for our Economic Development Manager regarding our, our local retail situation and it, we need help. Previously, it's, it's been about ninety, ninety-five percent of our new retail has been restaurants. With regards to Environmental Review Committee, I agree with members of the public that we need to, we need to hang on to this. And again, what you get with the ERC is you get a first set of eyes looking on these reports before they go to council, buried in a huge agenda. And that's, you know, really with, with all of the wish to retain these is so that you get adequate review of these items. And because we have this push to put everything onto consent, like I said, in January, we had, we had twenty-one items on consent. And now you're trying to, to make it so it's difficult for the items to be removed. And, and I, I think we're, we're really headed in the wrong direction with, with less oversight. With regards to audit, those decisions that were made there, taking those items, the request to take those items off of audits duties, I think we're setting ourselves up for another embezzlement, I really do. I, this is, this is very, very concerning changes. The Housing Element Community Engagement Plan Committee, that had completed their duties, I chaired that last year. So that one is complete. There was some wish to carry it on in order to keep the public informed of the housing element process. I think that that was a noble, noble request from Councilmember Chow. But I do understand that that committee has completed its, its duties at this time. With regards to the Legislative Review Committee, if it does move to council, that again is going to pile more work. So I, I see these removal of these committees as decreasing the amount of public engagement opportunities with these agenda items, the public oversight and review, and the public is ultimately going to be suffering for these decisions.
Any more comments from the discussion from the council?
Yeah, a few comments and a few additional questions. So for the, the City Attorney with regard to the remit of the Environmental Review Committee, the items that it would be reviewing and that would be then committed instead to the Planning Commission or the City Council, yes?
I believe that's the recommendation, yes.
Okay, all right. Or speaking of due process, that means they are probably public hearing items, aren't they?
That's correct.
So these are generally speaking, things that would not appear on the consent calendar anyway?
So there, so, so, so. Because, I mean, I guess I should, should, should back up. You know, if, if, if there was a separate, it depends on how it's, the Planning Commission's jurisdiction would be structured. Right now, there is a separate hearing to determine whether, basically whether a mitigated negative declaration or a environmental impact report is required. There, there's no requirement necessarily to hold a, you know, public hearing on that, it can be any kind of public meeting or even, in, in most jurisdictions, it is done, that determination is made at a staff level. There, there are other jurisdictions where there's, there are staff committees that make that decision. But depending on how it was structured, it could, would, would, you know, the Planning Commission's jurisdictions were structured, it could be a separate public meeting.
Got it, got it. So the main benefit, as I see it, then in removing the ERC from this equation is just that depending upon how we structure this process, it could all just go straight to the Planning Commission and you would not have to have an extra hearing beforehand.
Yeah, that would certainly be an option that, that council could consider.
Okay, that, that seems like a, a process improvement and you would have five sets of eyes on it anyway. For the City Manager, my understanding with regard to the Design Review Committee is that it is already made up of two members of the Planning Commission, is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay, are there any specific additional technical requirements to be on the, the Design Review Committee?
I don't believe so. I don't believe the council has established policies regarding criteria or eligibility for any commission or committee members.
Okay, so it's just two members of the Planning Commission in general, so I, I don't really see a problem with, with folding it into the Planning Commission as is, especially if it doesn't meet very often to begin with. And then can you clarify that the Economic Development Committee has never met?
It has not met.
Okay, all right. And the members of the, the public who were chosen for that committee in November, they've been informed that it has not, that there are no scheduled dates yet for it to meet?
My understanding is that subsequent to the interviews, the clerk was busy with the swearing ceremony, the orientation and other matters to support council. So they have not had any paperwork done for the Economic Development Committee members. And therefore, we're also waiting for council to appoint a committee, council members to support the Economic Development Committee. They, I think the committee members were expecting a January meeting to occur, but we don't know what that date is.
Okay, all right. Have you gotten questions from any of the, the committee members about scheduling?
I believe most of them are pretty patient and appreciative of how, how much time that staff needs to take to allow the proper onboarding.
Okay, all right. Thank you for, for all of that clarification. You know, I'll just offer in addition with respect to the Legislative Review Committee, I've watched every, or listened to every Legislative Review Committee meeting since, I think it's second meeting. I don't feel like this committee has managed to achieve what its original goals were. If we still have the lobbyist, I don't see any reason why the lobbyist couldn't work with the City Attorney to help leverage the interest that we have and inform council of upcoming legislation that might impact the city. Those are my comments. I, I just, you know, remind everybody, you know, of the saying that a, a camel is a horse drawn by committee. So it doesn't necessarily mean that just by virtue of having a committee that you're going to get a better outcome. We have to balance all of, all of these things between the amount of time that, that each one of these committees and commissions occupies and what the results are. Thank you very much.
Mayor Way, if I add, if I can add one more to Councilmember Frum's earlier point on Environmental Review Committee. My understanding is of the recently passed Housing Law, SB three thirty, limits the amount of, or the number of public hearing entitlement project can't go through. If my memory serves me right, my planning background tells me it cannot exceed more than five public hearing, or is this three?
Five.
Five. So typically, that would include your environmental scoping meetings, sometimes your Planning Commission, your council meeting, your second reading and whatnot. So having a consolidation with the Planning Commission would alleviate the risk of not comply with SB three thirty.
Thank you, City Council Wu, for your expertise and explanation. So I think I have a couple of minutes left. This is not intention to rush anything through, this is our second study on this issue and I have studied back and forth, forth and back, asked questions. For example, the Economic Development Committee. The recommendation is the city is conducting research on Economic Development Committee in other cities to evaluate what would work best for the city staff. City anticipate presenting this research for the city councils consideration in April twen- oh, sorry, I was reading something not quite right. Okay, that was the previous city. Okay, so what I would like to say, what I want to say is. On the Economic Development Committee specifically, if you, it's an open meeting, everybody would have noticed, I abstain from appointment from every commissioner because it, it's such a new committee and we're having new council members, I don't know who, but swearing in very soon. I strongly objected and I think it was noted that the previous council appointed the commissioners without the current council's ratification. So I just totally believe that if, if we want to be really transparent, we really need to take a look at this committee, committee and then say, what would work best? Incorporating our Economic Development Director's opinions and come back to the council and make recommendations? That is just my personal purview. But to consolidate really doesn't mean we're going to let the, the jobs go. And I think Councilmember Frum in one of the public comment was right on target. Having less committee doesn't mean we're not going to get the job done. And the staff recommendation is really to bring back a lot to the City Council. So that's why I believe we need to move, move forward with doing more research, consolidate and go from there. Because the current staff and the current working situation, the staff time and how effective these commissions are working, have, having more doesn't mean it's more effective. I really would like to see what the staff's research and comeback to recommend to us and it will be on the agenda and we'll have a chance to take a look at it, public comment, discuss it, ask questions, and then make decision moving, moving forward. So I think that's my second min, two minutes comments and I'm done my five minutes comment.
Where does, where, where did you see the staff recommending to bring this back? Because the staff report.
Yes, can we have the recommendation? The motion on the table?
Economic Development Committee and Legislative Review will be, issues will be addressed by the council as necessary. And I have requested for a proposal of how, of how the stated roles and responsibility could be addressed by staff. I have not received that, so will we receive that?
So staff's looking for council's direction to support staff recommendation and will come back with the ordinance amendment?
The staff recommendation includes coming back with a proposal to address the roles and responsibility of the staff, of the Economic Development Committee?
That will be addressing the ordinance amendment.
Believe the staff recommendation is on the, oh, it went away.
It should still be. Video, can you change the screen view? So that we can see the overhead? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So what I'm trying to say is, everything is going to come back to us. Today's recommendation is just to receive direction from the City Council so that the staff can start to make these recommendations and come back to council with it. Councilmember Moore, I think you have maybe a couple more minutes?
I don't, I don't know. So when I'm looking at PDF sixty-five, and I don't know if someone could bring that up, there's a couple of charts here. We have the commissions and hours spent annually and the committees and hours spent annually. And it seems as though the recommendations are, are based on those hours spent. Okay? Right, so if we were to look at that, we would be getting rid of the Audit Committee, for example. And we wouldn't do that because we believe that that committee has a really important role. Right? Yeah. And what we're saying is that these other committees which have much less of a time commitment. That they're, that they're not important. And they're actually taking less resources. The one in particular that concerns me is this abolishing economic development. I did not hear members of the public coming out when this item came to council, when we finally codified it. I did not hear members of the public saying, do not have an Economic Development Committee. The people have been talking for years in Cupertino about how we don't have a diversified economy. They've been wanting that to be improved. And here we have an opportunity, we went to the trouble of interviewing all of these people with, from all of their different backgrounds to make sure we had a diversified group of individuals, and I was about to say intellectuals, because I mean, I was blown away with, with, with some of the candidates that we had, it was amazing. And I'm excited to see this finally get going with this, with this incredible team of people who are waiting in the wings. And I, you know, I, so like I said, if you're, if the hour spent annually is the metric, why are we keeping audit? Why are we keeping? Why are we keeping planning commission? My goodness, 1,100 hours. That should go. I mean, this is not making sense. And we are not having to do what the city next to us do. We get to be unique. We get to do what's right for our own community. So I, and going back to having the second set of eyes in the extra group, now what you're doing is suggesting that we pile on more to council. You're giving me too few days to review and, and things are not getting spread out well, and you will get a worse, a worse work product from your council by doing that.
So thank you, Councilmember Moore. Can I follow up with a question on Councilmember Moore's comments? Was the decision to consolidate depend on the hours that's being spent?
Councilmember Moore's question was not as stated in the staff report. I think I purely provided a table to substantiate the argument that it would alleviate some of the staff resource, but the recommendation is not made based on the hours that's spent.
Thank you.
I had a quick comment.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Councilmember Moore has talked about the Audit Committee a couple of times during the course of this meeting, and I wanted to sort of get the record straight from my perspective. Yes, we are making changes in the Audit Committee setup. We are making changes in the way the reports are being sent through the various channels finally to city council. Nothing, and I repeat, nothing is, is being diminished in terms of the workload. The same reports are being produced, the same amount of work or, or needs of the committee and the city itself. Nothing is diminished in this process. What we are trying to do is streamline the process itself and make sure that council gets the same information that it always did and that we don't, we, we just focus on efficiency and focus on, on our, on the responsibilities of the Audit Committee and not reach out into areas that doesn't really come under the purview of the Audit Committee. So I wanted to make that clear. And the other comment I wanted to make, and it sort of goes back to, to the Audit Committee, remarked that Councilmember Moore made at the beginning of the meeting, that there was some kind of a bias on the part of the city council, city staff with, with the staff report recommending a chair and a vice chair. We had not met. The first time we met was way after that staff report was prepared. It was basically a placeholder, and I don't know how anything relating to bias can be alleged because their recommendations were not even upheld by, by the committee. So the staff report did not hold up and a completely new recommendation was put forth by the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mohan. I just want to follow up one comment. Every one of our council members is doing a really good job, but that doesn't mean new council members will not do as a good job as, you know, our previous councilmen. I hope that the respect is there to respect our colleagues' ability and, and what they can do to bring, set a new eyes to diff, to different committees and commissions. That would be just my comment. Thank you.
How much time do I have?
I think now we have 15 minutes. I really like to have 10 minutes to really work on whether we want to move forward or not. So maybe another five minutes together.
So I'd like to request that Administrative Hearing Committee be removed from the list because that's not a council or no commission, no council member sit on that committee. It's misleading to put it here and count it as one of the total committee. And the Disaster Council, I was assigned to that commi, council, and it didn't meet for a whole year and then met once. But mainly it's receiving report from the fire department, and those are reports I think could have just been reported directly to the council. And those are really good information to have for the council. I would suggest that we remove that and then have the Disaster Council be part of the, following the staff recommendation to refer those items directly to the council because those are information council and the public should have that. Then that cut, that removes 60 hours, and I think then Economic Development Committee that we should let that, it's being worked on and people have been appointed. I think we should just let that run, and their term is now two years. And I think we took council member's concern in mind when that was approved. I would suggest that just let it run for two years. And this council can decide after two years how well it runs and maybe modify the municipal code. I think that that's not make this political and you want to undo everything the previous council did. It seems pointless and a waste of city time that has been put in this. Thank you.
So why don't we do this? We have a motion and a second, and the council members each have one more minutes to, to give staff recommendations so that they, when they come back with their recommendations, they can incorporate some of our recommendations. That would be good because this is really for staff to come back with a lot of recommendations or ordinance so we can still study. Is that a good recommendation?
If I may, I'd like to propose a substitute motion.
Sure, if nobody wants to. Sure, go ahead.
So I'd like to propose the I, I follow the staff recommendation to merge Environmental Review and Design Review to Planning.
Can you speak louder?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
I mean, I agree with removing Legislative Review Committee. And I think Design Review and actually Design Review and Environmental Review Committee can be combined into one committee, but not merged with Planning because as you can see, Planning already is taking a lot of time. I think a small committee actually is more nimble and more efficient. And then I would like to recommend that Administrative Hearing Committee is removed from this list because that's not a council commission. And merge Disaster Council so that to do that, perform that function as part of the city council meeting if that meets the legal requirement. And then retain Economic Development Committee. So that's my proposal.
So your proposal is to accept the recommendation with your amendment?
So my, yeah, my proposal is remove Legislative Review, merge Environmental and Design Review into one, and keep Economic Development Committee and remove Administrative Hearing from this entire list and merge Disaster Council functionality to City Council.
But does it include the staff recommendation?
Which part?
The, the whole motion and then with your amendment. Are you?
Oh, I mean, removing the subcommittee part, removing the existing subcommittee.
So is this a brand new substitute motion without any of the original staff recommendation? Or is adopted with your amendment?
It's a staff recommendation regarding the subcommittee portion to remove those existing subcommittee.
I'm still, don't quite get it. So your motion, just the motion, doesn't include any of the other staff recommendations?
Could you repeat what's the staff recommendation?
Staff has three components. One is to move forward with the consolidation, and I got your suggestion for swapping out some of the committees that staff recommended. Second one is to discontinue the subcommittees, and I think I heard you say that you would support staff recommendation to, to discontinue the subcommittees. And the third one is to proceed, allow staff to proceed to come back with the ordinance amendment at a public hearing.
With your amendment?
So, so and then I'm moving the staff recommendation except the first item would be the consolidation that I mentioned in my motion.
I got that. Okay.
And in addition, I would like, okay, yeah, that's fine.
So we have a substitute motion. May, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, so deliberations? Any comments, deliberations from the council? If not, we can have a light vote.
I don't, I don't think that this, we can just move to a vote, that's fine.
Oh, we're voting.
Motion fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
Okay, so we, the substitute motion, motion failed, so we are going to the original motion. Do we have further discussions? We might have a couple of minutes for further discussions.
Can I make potential?
Friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment, yeah. So I would like staff to bring back a proposal on how the current stated role and responsibility that in the municipal code will be addressed if this committee is removed.
Which committee we're talking?
The Economic Development Committee.
So you're making a friendly amendment to?
For the staff.
For the staff to bring back the ordinance for the Economic Development Committee to?
Not order.
To include the original portion of it?
I think the staff proposal is to perform the function that's currently stated in the municipal code by the city council and all the staff. So I, it's unclear how that would be done. So I think this committee was proposed to solve a problem. That problem still exists. So I would like to know the solution if we are removing that solution.
Okay, so that's a friendly amendment to the, can we, do we, do we clarify?
I, I think I understand what, what you're asking for. Would you consent to recast it as a study session item in the future on alternatives to the current structure of the Economic Development Committee?
That's, I mean, we would consider that together with municipal code, or do we remove that and then study?
I, I, I think that the procedure that would make sense to me is to clean up the municipal code first, and then we can have a, a further study session.
I think it's better if we I think the cleaning up of municipal code for Economic Development Committee should come concurrent with a proposal so that we are not throwing the baby with the bathwater when we are saying we want to start from scratch.
So would, would it be sufficient then to ask staff to return with alternative suggestions?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I could accept that.
So the second, let, let me clarify first. The second, the second there we need to accept that friendly amendment to, and with the, also the motion, the councilman, wait a motion. Would you accept the friendly amendment that the councilmember Moore, Chow had made? Or do you want to clarify what's the friendly amendment?
I'm, I must, my understanding is that the staff report would be accepted with, with, in addition to the friendly amendment?
Yes, she's making, adding a friendly amendment to the original motion.
As modified by Councilmember Frum.
And the only comment I wanted to make is if it is directed specifically at the Economic Development Committee.
Maybe we should repeat it again?
Yeah, I think, I think that's everybody's understanding. Is, is that your understanding, Madam City Manager?
You lost track, if you don't mind repeating it again?
Sure, so then the, the
The friendly amendment is?
The, the motion as amended would be that we accept the staff recommendation with the proviso that staff would return with alternative options with regard to the Economic Development Committee.
And point of clarification, so when would council like staff to return with the alternative?
Good question.
The mayor and the city manager.
Before the ordinance amendment is considered or after?
Concurrent with the ordinance, that's the.
Would it be sufficient if a alternative is provided in the staff report as part of the ordinance amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So would you, I'll come back to discussion. Would you accept the friendly amendment?
I would. I would accept it.
Motioner, you accept because you, okay, so now discussion. Councilmember Moore, please.
If I may, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we move the staff recommended action. However, we retain the Economic Development Committee as it's codified.
Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, so further discussions? If not, let's vote on it. This is a substitute motion to move with recommended action but maintain the Economic Development Committee as is. Okay, so can we vote by light, please?
Substitute motion number two fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
So I'd like to go back to our first motion with your friendly amendment. Let's vote on that by light, please.
Main motion with friendly amendment fails, or I'm sorry, passes with Moore voting no.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. So I do believe this concludes our.
Yes, and then just for the record, want to make sure that Kristen and my records are accurate. So the motion that passed was to support staff's recommendation as stated in addition to providing an alternative to the economic development other than delegating to city council. And this could be stated in the staff report to council as part of the ordinance amendment consideration.
That sounds accurate to me.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. So thank everyone for staying almost midnight, so three minutes to midnight. We are sticking to the original meeting.
So when it comes back, will we be looking at separate items for each of the committee? Or they will be lumped together in the municipal code?
It would be a, one public hearing, ordinance amendment including various provision to the code.
So will it be explicitly specified in the agenda title that here are the list of committees that will be consolidated?
I believe the Brown Act, and Chris, correct me. I believe the Brown Act will actually simply say that public hearing to consider amendment to municipal code chapter 2 point, 2 point, and this, this and that. It will not specifically say the intent of what council just did. That is just to comply with the Brown Act.
I think Brown Act specified the minimum standard and for the interest for the public for transparency. I request that we spell out the committees that will be consolidated in the agenda title.
So, yeah, so we'll, we'll look at what makes sense given the Brown Act requirements and, and, you know, with the interest of transparency in mind.
I, I would want to caution that we are being billed by the number of letter on the newspaper for the agenda title. So when it gets long and then we will have to do multiple agenda posting, we will be get, we will be billed separately for the additional clarification.
Okay.
Transparency is more important.
Okay, thank you. So meeting is adjourned right at 12 o'clock, I believe. So meeting is adjourned, right at 12 o'clock, I believe.